February twenty-six, 2025, can we salute the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, good evening, everyone, school committee members and people in the audience. Could the superintendent please call the roll?
Mr. Austin.
Present.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yeah.
Ms. Cormier.
Present.
Mr. Lipsit.
Present.
Mr. Malrennan.
Present.
Ms. Wetzel.
Present.
Ms. Crowley.
Present. First on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the school committee? You have three minutes. The school committee voted on a policy to allow public comment to last three minutes. Please take the time to address anything under the jurisdiction of the school committee. Please refrain from any direct attacks on Woburn Public School staff. You are being recorded. Anything else? No, that is okay. Okay. And good evening.
Hi, school committee.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much for giving us a heads up that you were going to come to public comment tonight. Appreciate it. Okay, go ahead, you have the floor.
My name is Mary Petterudo, and along with Brian Hardin and Amanda Rutterman, I'm an advisor for the JMS Theater Program. I would like to introduce our new directorial team, who are leading our program's latest production of Matilda Jr., Camilla Hassan, Sophia Mazur, Lucy Rondo, and Maeve Sheehy. Camilla could not make it tonight, but they are amazing.
These Woburn High sophomores have been leading our middle school cast with all of the songs, dances, and scenes at rehearsal every day going back to late November. They're also in charge of all the sets, props, and costumes for the show as well. And most importantly, they are continuing the legacy of creating a community where students can be themselves and support each other in the performing arts.
Hi, I'm Maeve Sheehy, the stage director. We were all in the cast when we were in middle school and helped assist the previous directors last year for Beauty and the Beast Jr. We have fifty students in our cast and another twenty-five middle schoolers in our stage crew, along with many other high schoolers coming back to the Joyce to help behind the scenes and with the production. The students in our JMS Theater Program have worked extremely hard at each rehearsal to learn the songs, dances, and scenes that we have been teaching. They are a lot of fun to work with and are ready to perform to the best of their ability.
One minute. Take your time, but one minute.
Hi, I'm Lucy Rondo, and I'm the acting director. We hope to see the whole community at our musical Matilda Jr. this year. We will have three performances next week, on Friday, March seventh, at seven PM, and Saturday, March eighth, at twelve PM, and at four PM. The shows will be down the hall in the Joyce Auditorium, and we will be offering concessions for donation at each performance. Tickets are ten dollars for adults and five dollars for kids.
Hi, I'm Sophia Mazur. I'm the choreographer for the Joyce's production. We'd like to thank the community for all of the support you have given us, our program, our performances, and our students, year after year. It means so much to all of us, and it inspires us to keep working to make our show the best it can be for you all. We invite you all to come see our show and support the students who participate. There's a line in one of the songs in the show that says, "Even if you're little, you can do a lot. You mustn't let a little thing like little stop you." Even though some of our cast are young and only in middle school, they can definitely do a lot, and we hope you come to see just how much they can do next weekend.
Thank you all so much. We hope to see you there next week. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Petterudo. Is there anyone else that would like to come before the committee to address the school committee? Please sit down.
Well, I'm just addressing, like, some concerns.
Sure. If you'd like to identify yourself, that would be very helpful for the committee.
My name's Cassidy Morrissey. I'm a twelfth grade, sorry, eleventh grade student at Woburn Memorial High School.
Okay.
I'm just gonna address some issues that have been concerning in the school, that just need to be addressed. So, over the recent months, a growing concern for safety has become a major issue in the school, specifically the high school. In recent years, Woburn was a safe, friendly school, but since that, since we've switched principals, there's been a few issues and a few growing safety concerns. One of the most pressing issues at this school is the rise of fights in the bathrooms. These incidents not only disrupt the school day, but they create an atmosphere of fear and distraction, and they affect students who genuinely care about their education. We, uh, sorry, ultimately, these issues harm those who seek to grow from their education and future at the high school. And additionally, other major concerns, and additionally, other major concerns is harassment from male students to female students with catcalling and inappropriate behavior. Addressing these issues requires a firm stance on discipline and stronger preventative measures, and a shift of how we support these students. Now, the impact of bathroom fights. This has become a recruiting, a reoccurring problem, turning what should be a private space into a battleground. These fights lead to, uh, these fights lead to several negative consequences. Safety concerns and physical altercations pose a direct threat to students' well-being, sometimes resulting in serious injuries, not only to the students fighting, but also to anyone in the bathrooms at the time of these issues. Now, the education aspect. These fights are disrupting our education when fights break.
I just want to tell you, I have one more minute. It's something that I have to do for the meeting, okay? All right. Thank you.
I, these fights are disrupting our education. When fights break out, the aftermath affects everyone. Bathrooms become crowded with onlookers, teachers have to pause their lessons and can, and address concerns, and students are more focused on drama rather than their education. Going on, one of the biggest issues compounding these problems is what's, is that students, even some faculty members occasionally support or protect these students, um, that are, sorry, protect these students who are instigating into violence and harassment, whether it's by refusing to, um, report the incidents or minimize consequences. This misplaced support creates an unfair and harmful environment for these students who prioritize their education. Continuing to ignore this enables bad behavior when students start to fight or harass other students, this, and they receive little to no consequences, they're encouraged to continue their actions.
I'm gonna have to ask you to stop, um, speaking now, because we've spent three minutes.
All right.
I see that you wrote something, so if you'd like to give it to Jean over there, then the committee can review it. I'm not trying to cut you off, it's just a timing thing, but I do appreciate you coming and speaking to the school committee. Madam Chair, can I just cede my time to her, Social Security? I don't think we would do that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Is there anyone else that would like to come to speak before the school committee in public comment tonight?
Oh, honey, you left your cell phone.
Oh, that's fine. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bernice Friedman. I'm a resident of Leonard Street, a proud mom of a second grader at the Shamrock School, a member of the PTO at the Shamrock School, and now a member, a representative of the Shamrock School, in the advisory committee for the redistricting. Since the committee first held its, well, really only meeting, the advisory committee, that is, I've taken the initiative to reach out to fellow Shamrock parents, to help inform them and gauge the public sentiment. Together with other members of the PTO, we've held two online forums, had conversations with other parents at the school parking lots, I've answered questions on social media, and even spoke with other parents at the after-school club. Together, we've engaged with about fifty parents in a matter of two weeks, just the past two weeks. And I'm here to report that through these conversations, I've learned two things. Parents are not satisfied with having only one option at this point in the proposed timeline that relies largely on the five million dollar plan to acquire modulators. Number two, parents are also feeling confused and rushed because they have not been given proper notice about redistricting. So for the remainder of my time, I'd like to convince you to think differently about your communication strategy. And I'd like to offer some advice and best practices so we don't keep making the same mistakes year after year. Poor communication is one of the leading causes of projects and strategies to fail. Let me repeat that. Poor communication is one of the leading causes of projects and strategies to fail.
Ms. Freeman, you have a minute.
Without clear and consistent messaging about the short-term and long-term goals, objectives, and implementation steps, parents, teachers, our taxpayers, and other community stakeholders will continue to feel confused and ultimately lack the buy-in, the buy-in that's necessary to execute this very important redistricting effectively. I want to thank you for including some of the parents in the advisory committee, and also thank you for starting the website. But frankly, these two steps are not enough, given the short window of time we're racing against once again. I am disappointed that the advisory committee's second meeting was canceled on Monday, especially after we were promised that we would be presented with other scenarios on February twenty-fourth, and I noted that on my notes. And the website currently does not provide full transparency and easy access to all the subcommittee meeting minutes and discussions that have taken place prior to the inclusion of the parent representatives. So once again, I encourage you to create a robust communication strategy and create metrics, so that we know that your communication strategy is working. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing this, committee. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the school committee?
Hi, I'm Caitlin Skinner. I have three children, one here at the Joyce and two at the Hurd-Wyman. It seems like the redistricting plan is dependent on city council approving the modulators, and I guess my questions are, what's the timeline for that, and more importantly, what if they don't? Is there a backup plan? A few years ago, there was a feasibility study which said that the Hurd-Wyman couldn't continue without some change. But then nothing was done, and last year, we had nine classes that were twenty-six to, I'm sorry, twenty-four to twenty-six students. Then last year, we listened to the principals of the Hurd-Wyman, the Malcolm White, and the Goodyear described, teaching in halls, not being able to use the library, music teachers lugging twenty-four ukuleles upstairs, art teachers having to lug things around. We watched as we were told from this, in this room, that that couldn't continue, that we had to do something. Hurd-Wyman has more kids this year than they did last year. What I'm afraid of is that they don't approve it, we're back to square one, it is May again, and we're told that we can't do nothing, and then nothing happens. So, I know last year, it had been talked about of if there could be a Plan B. Is there a Plan B to do something? Because for three years to continue to say and watch my kids' classes grow larger and larger, and be told, "We have to do something," and watch as nothing is done, is extremely disappointing. I get the uncertainty, I get the, at this point, more than half of my kids' elementary school career is predicated by them, by us being told that something will be done. I would love to see it happen in a way that could benefit my kids while they're still in elementary school.
Thank you. Thank you for addressing the school committee, Ms. Skinner. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the school committee?
Making my husband talk. [laughing].
Hi, my name is Tammy Hotnienski, and this is my husband, David Hotnienski. My daughter goes to the Shamrock, Madison. We love the school, and we are here to stand up for her. I feel as though, other than for Bernice being our advocate and informing us, we wouldn't have known that you guys were voting on anything tonight and about these guidelines. So, I'm really here to say that we need more from you. We, our children need more from you. I sent you guys a very detailed email today, and I really hope you take a look at it, because we have to stand up for our children. And we can't do that without information. We can't do that without data. We can't help you to help them. So, I'm just asking you guys to make sure that you guys include us in the process. Yes, you want to add?
I want to reiterate kind of everything that Bernice came up here and communicated. I think she's been a great voice for us, but when we're presented with what looks like one option, how is that actually getting considered an option? And then we get collections of information, some of the numbers don't add up. When we're looking at how to break things down, we're seeing total counts of adjustments that have been made to student body population. That doesn't tell us what change is taking. That's not telling us each individual delta as far as how many kids are moving. And again, maybe that's located in some other space, but the way the information's being presented, it's, we're trying to piece it all together, and I can't give, we want to be able to give feedback about what's happening in our community, what's happening with our schools, and it becomes very difficult to do that if we're not sure which, which data source we can actually rely on. I.
I apologize, sir. You have about ten seconds left. I have to do it.
I got you.
It's how we run the meetings, and everyone has three minutes.
We love our school. It's a good school. I think the adjustments in the plan do it a disservice, and I would like to see why that could happen and what you guys can do to make them more equitable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the school committee? Come on up.
Hey, guys. Rachel Kouberry, Six Blake Street, Hurd-Wyman parent. So, I think you all know that I follow the school committee meetings pretty closely. I tried my best to keep up with information, but I'm finding myself more and more confused as I try to put the picture together about what's going on with the redistrict. So I'm speaking tonight to share my thoughts and confusions, hoping that I gain clarity. So first, I'm very confused about why the redistrict hasn't been discussed at finance subcommittee in planning for the budget for next year. We talked a lot about budget implications of the redistrict last year, yet this year, it seems like we're saying there's absolutely no budget implications. Additionally, earlier this week, Ms. Young stated that she knew exactly how many sections and classes there would be across the district next year, yet I don't think that we know what the district will look like in the fall. So I want to hear more about that in the budget presentation tonight. Next, the modulators. Some members of this committee have spoken very passionately about our need for the modulators. I went to almost every ECP task force meeting. I heard the conversations, but I saw very little data and real examples. I'm very willing to get on board with the idea of modulators, but I haven't been convinced yet. So for example, in looking at the first round of redistricting plans that was released before vacation, we moved the ECP classrooms to modulators, we filled the reeves with classrooms, and then what happens at the Shamrock? So we moved four ECP classrooms out, we also moved twenty elementary school students out. So do we have vacant classrooms? Because we're not adding more kids in sections. So I'm confused. I understand that we need a redistribution of space, and I'll even entertain that we need more space, but you haven't yet showed me how all the options available don't work, and that our only option comes with a five million dollar price tag. So now the guiding principles. Yes, please streamline these priorities tonight. Help the consultants make maps that are consistent with our priorities, and include the community in this. While the thought exchange was something, it was so open-ended that the narrative data collected was difficult to call through and sort. So for example, concepts that were similar, like neighborhood schools and walkability and school close to my house, didn't actually appear to get grouped together because the responders didn't use the exact same words. And so, the committee can't really see what the top priorities are for the community, and let, yet it seems like that's what you're trying to do.
Thirty seconds.
And so, while I caution you, while it might be helpful for the committee to determine a shorter list of guiding principles tonight, I caution you against saying that the community had input into those principles. You can't take a free thought brainstorming session, make a word wall, and call it community input. If you do indeed narrow down the guiding principles tonight, please send those principles to the community for feedback, ask the community to rank those principles in order of importance, and involve the advisory group. Lastly, can we hear more about the middle schools? Those maps last week were really surprising for a lot of people. Are we really redistricting grades six and seven?
That's three minutes, Ms. Kouberry. Just letting you know.
So, I hope that we can hear more about the middle school as we talk about the redistrict. Last, my common thread in all this is timelines, so please talk about the timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, if anyone has anything written that they would like to give to Ms. McLeod, you can do that too, in case I have to cut you off, which I'm sorry. Okay. Anyone else that would like to come before the committee? Going once? Okay. So I'm closing public comment. All right. Moving on, is Mr. Viola here?
Hi.
Would you like to address the committee?
No comments.
All right, great. Thank you for being here tonight, I appreciate it. Student representative to the school committee? You're on.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna try and keep this as quick as possible, but the sports section is so long, it's actually unbelievable. This winter season has just been absolutely mind-blowing. In wrestling, we have two state champions this year, which is just unbelievable. The boys' state champion is the first we've had since, I think, the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen season, and the girls' state champion is the first we've had since twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one season. They're, Alexandria Orelana for the boys, and Caitlin Castoldi for the girls. So, that's incredible. We're also sending six wrestlers to the state tournament in a couple of weeks, which is pretty incredible. For the hockey teams, both hockey teams have had incredible seasons. The girls just had a five-zero win against Stonem, which is unbelievable. The boys are playing right now. Finn Murphy recently broke the boys' all-time points record. And most incredibly of all, three of the four highest-scoring players in Woburn history are playing tonight, which is just unbelievable.
Let's take a recess and move on, make that.
Yeah, I'm actually trying to wrap this up quickly, so I can run over there. For track and field, we've also just had an incredible season. If I can scroll, I have to scroll down, there's, the list is so long. Nicole Gangi is first in the state for hurdles, second in the state for long jump, and second in the state in the three-hundred meter. Kaylee Curl is second in the state for hurdles. Sinead Butler, Carla Bosso, Zo Fiano, and Emilia Rivera are all representing our eight-hundred-meter four-by-four team. They are eighth in the state. Sidney Mativier, I feel awful for butchering these names, because it's incredible what they're doing. Nyla Hughes, Chloe Harkins, and Leah Finn are also, are another relay team we've sent for the four-hundred meter. They are also eighth. Anthony Casulo is sixth in the state for boys' hurdles. Nashian Labua is seventh in the state for shot, or for hurdles, and sixth in the state for shot put. And DeWitt Kalubia, I feel so bad, she's seventh in the state for thousand meter, which is just unbelievable. This is, I think, probably the best season we've had in who knows how long. Coming up for student activities, we have the Massachusetts Education Theater Guild, which is a theater program and theater competition between various schools across the state. Our theater company is producing an original play, The Lion, the Witch, in her phone book, which is a parody of Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe. It's really exciting stuff. And for the seniors, we just had our internship meeting today, and, you know, we're gearing up for that, we're getting ready for graduation, and AP and final exams coming up soon. So, all very, very exciting.
Thank you, student representative Moffett. Any questions for Representative Moffett? Yes, Mr. Malrennan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe you missed a couple of these. Do you have any plans for next year yet? Want to introduce yourself? Or where you're going?
Oh, absolutely. I'm Kayla Moffett. I'm a senior for, I completely forgot to do this. I'm a senior in this, this year I play lacrosse, I'm involved in a couple of different things, but for next year, I am currently looking at, I think, almost a full ride at UVM.
Wow. Congratulations.
It's exciting.
Thank you, Miss Malrennan, for asking that. Why would we never even know?
You never even know. Well, he had choices.
Wow, dang.
I'm still waiting to hear from Cornell, but that's bad.
Good for you. Cornell. Please. Any more questions for Representative Moffett? Yes, Vice Chair Chisholm.
For the internship, are you going to do one?
Unfortunately, I can't. I'm taking a couple APs, and with how rigorous AP classes are, you're not able to do both in internship and APs.
There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Very proud of you. Awesomeness. Any further questions for our student representative? No? Do you, Representative Moffett, you may stay and deliberate with us, you just can't vote, or?
I understand. I'm gonna slip out and watch the game.
Okay.
Thank you so much, have a great night.
No, no, thank you. You can come back and tell us the score at the end, that would be awesome.
Absolutely.
All right. Moving on to reports and presentations of superintendent and staff, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Crowley, who is going to present.
Yes. So, at this time, I want to introduce Ms. Kim Gustenhoven, and Representative, I apologize.
Francine.
Francine from UMass Lowell. We just spoke, we know each other from the Baptist church here, but just to talk about early college and the STEM program at Woburn Memorial High School.
Thank you so much. Very excited to be here tonight to review all the great information we have of our new programming.
I'm just wondering if you're close enough to the mic. Maybe we can move that a little bit, because no one wants to miss this. All right. Thank you, Ms. Gustenhoven.
This better? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So I'm here tonight, I'm Kim Gustenhoven, I am the STEM coordinator at the high school. So STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and math, and those are the departments that come under my umbrella. And as part of that, I have been working with Dr. Costin from the University of Massachusetts, early college programming. We have a partnership that we started over a year ago. We're in our second year. And it is early college program, this is not the same as a dual enrollment program. Our students are actually students at UMass, they're enrolled there as a UMass student. They take, this year, this year and the past year, we've offered two science courses for students, and they have a professor that we livestream in, so they don't have to leave the school, they're right there, and they have the class, professor teaches it, our staff supports the students on the days they don't have the lecture opportunity with the professor. And the real bonus is it's free, completely free. They don't pay for the books, they don't pay for the professor's time, the course is on a UMass transcript, so they're getting UMass credit that is transferable to other universities and schools for future. So they can actually work to minimize their costs their freshman year, that's maybe the best way to put it. And so, next year, we're looking at adding English writing and literature courses, statistics, yeah, statistics and pre-calc, history.
Do I miss anything?
And we're keeping the science. So, I will let Dr. Costin speak for a moment, because she can fill you in on some other details. We're just really excited about this opportunity.
Absolutely. So it has been a pleasure for UMass Lowell to partner with Woburn High School. We're very excited about being able to bring this opportunity here to our high school students. Students who participate in the program are juniors and seniors here at the, I was about to say at the university, at the high school, but they are, we do consider them UMass Lowell students. So we're very excited to be able to continue this program and grow this program. Like Kim said, this is our second year that we've partnered with, with Woburn High School, and we're looking to expand to those additional courses. They are college courses, they are actually taking college classes, they are earning college credits. And by us being able to expand opportunities for students to take these courses, students will have a chance of earning anywhere from twelve to fifteen credits by the time they graduate from, from high school. That's equivalent to one semester of college free, that they don't have to worry about paying.
We're very excited about being able to bring this opportunity here to our high school students. Students who participate in the program are juniors and seniors here at the, I was about to say at the university, at the high school, but they are, we do consider them UMass Lowell students. So we're very excited to be able to continue this program and grow this program. Like Kim said, this is our second year that we've partnered with Woburn High School, and we're looking to expand to those additional courses. They are college courses. They are actually taking college classes. They are earning college credits. And by us being able to expand opportunities for students to take these courses, students will have a chance of earning anywhere from 12 to 15 credits by the time they graduate from high school. That's equivalent to one semester of college free, that they don't have to worry about paying for when they enter into the college. The courses are, credits are transferable to other state universities or community colleges. While we would want the students to join us at UMass Lowell, we do understand that the whole purpose of this opportunity is to allow those students, particularly those students who might not see themselves as college-going students, to give that opportunity in a safe and supportive environment to be able to take a chance at, maybe this is something I might want to do and continue my education in going into college. And it's, and like Kim said, it is free of cost. We're currently working on the designation process through the state, through DESI, to continue these opportunities so it will not be a cost to the students or to the high school, to the district. So thank you for having me tonight.
So in the fall, this, the past two falls, we've taken the kids for a field trip to UMass. They meet with the professors, they meet the students, they get tours, they hear about financial aid and how to proceed with paperwork and...
And they go to the dining hall, which is the best part of the day. We have to take them to the cafeteria.
Yeah, we have to do a head count after lunch to make sure we got everybody back on the bus. They have a fabulous cafeteria, and the kids really enjoyed it. And it's a nice opportunity to meet with the professor. Sometimes the professor does come to the high school to work with the students, depending on their schedule and timing of the course. We try to coordinate their schedule with our schedule, but it's just such a great experience for the kids. And we had 94% pass rate for the kids that participated this past year, which is fabulous. So they go with their credit and move forward.
Yes.
And that'll get one science course out of the way, right?
Exactly.
And along with that, we are looking at the One Goal programming. It's a curriculum. I went to a, I got to see the program and meet with the students in Marlborough about three months ago. Prior to that, I had met with the One Goal people with Francine. And that program provides support to the students in areas of how to fill out paperwork, how to write a resume, soft skills, what to wear, how to write a good email, and all those pieces that enter into this picture of moving on either to college or career. So we are going to have that programming come in, and the kids that are in this cohort of early college will be able to take advantage of that. Two of our brand-new guidance councils are going to participate in the program. They will be leading those classes, which is also beneficial in that we can use that information with all our students, not just with the cohort of kids that are in early college. And when I spoke to some students at Marlborough, it really grabbed you in the heart. One young man said that, you know, he would be the first to attend college in his family and that he was going to teach his sister how to do all the things he had been taught because he had not had anyone to guide him through that intricate process of applying to college. So it was really great to speak with the kids. They didn't know any of us. A group of adults come in and ask you a whole bunch of questions, but they were very forthright and appreciative of the programming that they had with One Goal and how positive it had been for them. And they were really looking forward to their future, which was so nice to see. What else do we have? Just quick. You have to sit through this. No worries, no worries. Other college opportunities, college credit opportunities, we have in the STEM department, we have five different AP courses, which are full to the brim this year, which I have listed. We have bio, chemistry, two different physics. One is algebra-based, one is calculus-based, and environmental science. And the math department, we're adding, and you'll hear about that later, we're looking to add another calculus level. We have AB. We want to add BC. Statistics, computer science A, computer science principles, and a pre-calculus course that we'd like to add for next year. So that's six. That's six. And some new things that we're just doing in the science and math area. We finished our cell culture lab, which we use with the UMass programming, the kids use, and are doing experimentation, PCR, just like you had with COVID vaccine. We have the equipment and facilities now to do DNA research, and we're looking, the teacher that teaches that is from the biotech industry, and she is going to run, would like to run a research program next year. So the kids that have started experiments, they have some pretty intricate experiments that they do, that they can continue those for a second year, and she will be working with them to publish those in journals. So that's a very exciting opportunity for them to go to college and be already published. And what else do we have? We're expanding our early college program. We also have dual enrollment program with Middlesex, which is slightly different, but we have kids involved in that. We have an overlap with the innovation career pathways that we have with DESI. We have one in biotech and one in manufacturing. And a lot of the courses that we're working with UMass will actually fold into that programming as well in a nice way and give them more opportunities to experience college life. We're going to add to the math program for next year with the two AP courses, and one of the math teachers is also going to be teaching an engineering class next year that we already run, but we're switching it over to the math department, which is great because it brings in a different perspective from the science department. So that's nice for the kids. I worked with Jessie Wetzel and talking with her about what we are doing with this innovation career pathway and the early college and working on collaboration within the community and industry to try to bring more people into the high school. So if you're out there and you would like to present some, your profession to students, how you get there, what you do with it, what opportunities you'd have in the future because of it, we're going to increase that program and work with the city to make that, to grow that program and give the kids other options and experiences for their future. We're looking at a lot of data and using that to develop instructional materials, and we're strengthening our STEM program. I think we've really stepped it up in the last couple of years, but looking with the equity inclusion piece in mind as well. And that's, that's everything.
All right, great. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, doctor, I didn't catch your last name.
Costin. It's like Boston, but with a C.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Dr. Bostick. I appreciate it. Any questions for this crew? Yes, Mr. Lipsett.
Thank you so much for this presentation. This is great to see. I especially appreciate the focus on students who might be the first in their family to go to college, students who weren't really thinking of themselves on that path and the opportunity that this gives them. That's a really wonderful piece of this. You spoke a little bit earlier, I may, perhaps I misheard you, about potentially expanding this beyond STEM as well into other areas. Can you talk a little bit more about that and what some of the potential plans there are?
So this is our second year.
All of the new courses, too, are in the...
You guys will hear all about them, but we did, I did outreach to other departments to check for interest in having, I have to have teachers to work with the professors, so it's great to have all these wonderful ideas, but you need the teachers to come on board with us to do it. And we had a number of people interested, a variety of subjects, some we won't be able to do maybe for another year just because of availability with professors. We have to really meet their schedule and agree, you know, they're actually teaching the course, so the teacher has to work with them. But we've definitely added the English department, the history department, the math department. Yes. Very excited about that, that we have so many teachers interested in working with the professors and helping the kids. It's great.
That was a testament to our partnership with UMass Lowell. Francine's been great about coming out and meeting with staff and doing kind of like information sessions or kind of answering questions, and I think it speaks to our ability to grow is also that the partnership has been so helpful.
It's been, it's been a great partnership, working, like you said, with the teachers, the teachers that are so excited to be a part of the program. And that collaboration between the teachers and the faculty members have been like spot on. They really collab together to make it as much of a rewarding experience and enrichment experience for the students.
That's great. Thank you. And just one other, could you give us a little bit of background on how this came about, how this program came to Woburn?
So early college and I can tell you, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we are kind of behind when it comes to early college. We do traditional dual enrollment, but an early college system is more than just dual enrollment, right? Because we do have this collaborative component to it. We do come into the school as opposed to students having to travel onto a campus to take the classes. So over the last, maybe roughly 10 years, the Commonwealth has been looking at how we can expand and grow the early college. The UMass system as a whole has entered into the early college, and we started out with a feasibility study that says how we can do and what we need to do as a University of Mass system to step into this realm of early college. And it's actually our name of our program, early college program, is the Commonwealth Collegiate Academy, or CCAT. Right now, UMass Lowell and UMass Dartmouth are the two schools that are fully immersed of doing the CCA program, with UMass Amherst looking to start this upcoming fall semester. So the idea is for us, each UMass campus, to work with neighboring districts in our region. So Woburn was one of the schools that we were looking at that fits the demographic, has that population of students. So we did the outreach and said, hey, we want to start this program. We want to bring you college credits, and we don't want to charge you. You want to come?
Something to turn down. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right, okay. Ms. Cormier. Thank you. This actually reminded me of the curriculum of studies that I also reviewed today that were coming up, including the Project Lead the Way biomedical innovation, and if that is added. I was interested in potentially being a mentor, if needed, as a nurse practitioner and a student of public health nutrition. I just finished my own capstone at UMass Amherst, so please make note of that.
Thank you. We'll be fine, too.
But this is all amazing.
Applying for jobs.
I've got jobs.
Go over and see the cell lab. You'd be quite impressed.
I would love to. Thank you.
Oh, great. Ms. Wetzel.
Hi. This was a fantastic presentation. And Ms. Gustenhoven, I sat with you a few months ago and had the pleasure to hear everything that we're doing inside of our schools, and it's absolutely fantastic. I think it's a shout-out to our staff and to our students as well. And I remember one of the things you told me, one of the tours you went on at UMass with the students, they were in a classroom, like just observing a college class, and they were answering all the questions.
They were.
For the college kids.
They were.
So I think that's amazing.
The college kids said nothing. And then when we went down and met Dr. Shea after the lecture, he said, wow, it was great you answered all the questions. And one of the girls said, well, we studied that a long time. It was like, oh, great. They were great. Yeah, they were very, they did us proud that day.
They did. They really did.
And all the things that we're doing inside of our building that you and I spoke about, just the, it's things that you're doing at jobs, and so it's preparing our kids for the real world. It's things they're going to see when they go to college, it's things they're going to see in the industry, and so it's not something that's new to them. And I think that's so important. It's real-life experience. And I also think that's what's great about One Goal as well, because with One Goal, we're not just preparing them academically, but socially. Okay, what do you wear to an interview? What kinds of questions should you ask? How do you do a resume? And we're following these kids after graduation, to my understanding, with One Goal, which is fantastic, because first year of college is hard, drop rates are high. And so this program really helps set them up for success, especially kids that might not come from a background where their parents went to college. And so I think it's wonderful, all that we're doing. So thank you. And Dr. Costin, thank you so much for being here as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. Vice Chair Chisholm.
As a parent who put four kids through college, being able to save a semester would be awesome. I mean, I wish I had this 15, 20 years ago, you know, but I think it's great, and I hope that we have a lot of interest from students and parents to do this, because I think that, you know, a lot of people might not even know about it. So that would be helpful to, as we spread the word further.
Yeah, well, opportunities, yeah, right, exactly, while we're here tonight, and we want to continue to be able to do those type of things.
And I see that you make interesting experiments, because through finance, I see some of the things that I think should come from Lenny's budget, but are actually going through science. These little creatures that come in, I was like, okay. But it's nice to see the kids being able to do that sort of stuff.
Yeah. The secretary of the high school really, when it says live, she calls me right away. She has to be yours. Come get it.
Oh, my God. But thank you so much. This is awesome.
Thank you. Any further questions for Ms. Gustenhoven or Dr. Bostick? Yes, James, Mr. Austin, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not a question, but just a comment. I'm already a fan of Dr. Costin. I know already, and I'm also a fan of our amazing husband, so thank you, I think both of you for sharing today. I'm actually, my children are recipients of some of the services that you guys are presenting. My son is currently in a dual enrollment. He's taking, I think, a business communications class at Middlesex Community College. He also went on a field trip to UMass Lowell.
He did.
It's a school that his sister went to at one point. So he actually told me, he said, going to the school, I would be, prior to going to the school, I was scared, like I wasn't sure about college, but going, he said, it's not much different than high school. He said, I saw a lot of Woburn kids there, and he said it's, he said, I'm not scared. So I appreciate that because it gives him the opportunity to see it firsthand and to kind of calm down the anxiety that he comes with, you know, exploring somewhere new.
Yes.
And so, and I just want to say thank you very much for all that you do. One thing I was nervous about when I saw it, and I was like, okay, you're teaching a college course? I was like, who's teaching this? I was thinking, are the staff? And you mentioned that, no, they're not. It's professors teaching. I think that's amazing to have college professors teaching our young people. So thank you very much for everything you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Austin. Anything else? Yes, Mr. Malrennen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, ladies. Great to see you. Kind of what Ms. Chisholm was talking about, and we heard from our student rep, how successful he's going to be. You put a price tag on what you're offering, you know, it's free to our students, but if you were paying for this particular program, what is it, the cost savings that the families, again, kind of like Mr. Austin's point, students have never had an opportunity to even see a college. Now they're getting that. If they had to pay for that, if you have a, you know, just a rough figure, maybe.
So, ooh, off the top of my head, and I should know this.
That's okay. I'm going to assist the savings for the families, but I just want to make sure that, you know, it's an opportunity for our students to, you know, go after it, you know, pursue it, be part of your program, and then hopefully stay with UMass Lowell and continue their education there as well.
Right, yeah. So I'm thinking it costs probably about, no, I'm adding in room and board, so just tuition, I think it's about a good $12,000 to $15,000 a semester.
Yeah. We're operating this right after Woburn High School, professors giving it to our students. So I just want to make sure that the message is out that that's, you know, available to students at Woburn Memorial High School. So I appreciate that.
So spread the word. Everywhere you go.
That's awesome.
I'm all set, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malrennen. Any further questions? No closing.
Just a statement. First of all, thank you for coming. I'll work backwards to Mr. Malrennen's question. You're paying for, typically, it's three graduate, three credits undergrad would be anywhere from $1,500 to $2,000.
Right.
Per course.
Right.
So if you multiply out however many courses you take.
Yeah, if they take four or five courses.
If you take four or five courses, you're looking at, you know, significant savings as a parent who is paying college.
Me, too. Who's kids didn't take advantage of that.
And so on that, just a point of clarification, I just wanted to back up a little bit because Kim Gustenhoven's been the science coordinator for six or seven years now. She's not... She's now doing STEM and so we've, we've moved and grooved a little bit. But I want to say thank you to Kim because the innovation pathways that you just breezed through wouldn't be an option if you were not in this position. And so, and the amount of work, like you just casually drop in that you drove to Marlboro to meet with students and these kinds of things don't happen if we don't have people willing to, to go outside and do these things. And so, thank you for your efforts in, in this role. And the other part of it is relative to the, the early college, Chancellor Chen up at UMass Lowell, I graduated from UMass Lowell a few years ago, but I was invited to meet with the chancellor when she became the chancellor, I think, three or four years ago. And so, I went up, I invited Ms. Young, we had breakfast with the chancellor and we were, it's a beautiful office. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to.
Yeah.
But we're the president of UMass, you've got a nice, nice office. But, and that's kind of the origin of this early college conversation because it's about what, what, how can we partner with local organizations to support our kids and to advance what their, what their hopes and dreams and aspirations are beyond what they know here? And so, field trips were one of the things. We talked about having kids in, in middle school start going on field trips to, to UMass Lowell to see what college looks and feels like. They can do it, they just may not know that yet.
Right.
And they may not opt to go to college, by the way, too, but we want to prepare everybody to the extent that we can. So, I, I'm grateful to have this partnership. It sounds like it's going really well.
Very well. And, and thank you, I appreciate you saying that and mentioning that as well, too, because that is what's really important. This is a program that starts from the top up. Like, our chancellor is fully behind this and fully backed this, as well as the larger UMass system. President Meehan is very much, he, everywhere he goes, he's speaking about early college and what's happening across all of the UMass system. So, that's a really good point to know that this is something that is, is being led by the leadership of our universities.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Good night.
For the presentation. All right. That being said, we are now moving on to the UMass Memorial High School Program of Studies. We will be needing a vote on this. I don't know who's presenting. Sounds like Principal Rassanen is coming.
Thank you. I consider a little bit of luck. So, the hope was to couple the presentation tonight with him, Gustafen and UMass Lowell as a large portion of the program and studying new courses are all the courses that you just heard about. And I'm going to hand this over to Principal Rassanen in a minute as really this is the work of the high school leadership team. But I did just want to talk about, before we look at kind of what are the new courses at the high school for next year, you'll see that there were some updates to the program of studies itself that we just wanted to highlight. The first being, of course, at a previous meeting, we talked about the update to the policy for the graduation requirements and the competency determination since the vote in the state of Massachusetts to not have MCAS feed that competency determination. And again, that this, and again, I just heard it again on the news last night, the reminder that there is an MCAS kind of group replacement group at this meeting and so will be provided for this year is a this year thing and something that we'll be continuing to look at for the year's program of studies. But that update for competency determination has also been updated in the full document. Typically, for the approval of the program of studies, it's really just to look at the new courses. As we did go through with the full program of studies this year and update things, again, we updated the UMass instructional vision, kind of just made sure that it was aligned with our most current work. I wanted to provide, I provided all of you with a copy of it so that you could see it, but that typically is not, you know, typically look at that whole thing each year, but you do have a copy. And again, I will hand it over to, oh, thank you, Principal Rassanen to give a kind of a high level of conversation around any kind of the overall updates that are made, as well as you can watch for any of the courses and answer any questions as well as I can answer those as well.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Hello.
So, as Ms. Young mentioned, there are some general updates to the program of studies as well as the new courses. A lot of the updates are just cleaning up language, updating things such as the competency determination, which led us to clarify the graduation requirements. Levels of instruction were updated last year. We are making a few changes to course selection and just doing our best to make sure that that is equitable and as data-driven as possible so that students have access to courses and that things are done consistently across all departments and all levels of the school. Course selection process is listed here, that's just cleaning up some language. We're still, I think this is year three of Power School now, so still getting used to doing our, our course selection there. Course changes, add, drop and override process are adjusted as well because we want to make sure that things are as clear as possible for parents, for students, for teachers in terms of what people are being asked to do and what is available to them. So, when it comes to the course changes, one of the things that was in there was, it was available to students for a really long time to change courses up through the second term. So, we're just trying to adjust and just clean up the, the clarity of a lot of these things. The Student Services Overview is just a general comprehensive overview of the support that we offer students. So, just cleaning up and make sure everything's in one place.
I think that was also just, again, just to kind of in terms of like one of the, a document that needs to be reviewed a little bit, some of the names of the programs at the high school had changed over time and hadn't been updated. So, again, these were just reflecting current practices.
Yeah, a good example of that, we've shifted our, the names of our, a lot of our special education programs so that they mirror what's being done at the elementary and middle school levels to make sure that transitions are manageable for students and that services are clear in what's being provided. And we do have a good number of new courses. Kim and Francine went through a lot of them. And one thing that I, Kim probably wouldn't mention, but I feel like is worth mentioning is our cohort last year that was in our early college program and the science classes actually, they ended up earning more credit than the college kids because they did more work than the kids at UMass Lowell, which I thought was a testament to, to the work that she's doing in that department. So, the early college courses are in here, the English College Writing 1 and 2, early college literature, and those are designed to give students those prereqs or some of those pre-rerequirements before students can enter their preferred major. So, instead of having to take remedial courses and pay for them, they can take them as UMass Memorial High School students. There's early, early college history course that's coming, statistics, pre-calc. And we also have some new AP courses in math, AP Pre-Calculus, AP Calculus BC, which is a higher level than, I think we have three sections of AP Calculus AB. So, we have some really, really bright kids at the high school. Science and Technology, still, we have the PLTW course, which is now an early college course, Civil Engineering and Architecture, Biomedical Innovations, and then Honors Independent Research, which I think is going to be really interesting to see what comes out of that. And then we have a new foundations course designed to give students that might need it a boost, similar to the math and English foundations courses we added last year to make sure that kids are getting the support they need. We are bringing back our dance classes, so musical theater dance, social dance, jazz and hip hop and world dance. And one of the key components of these is that these are also going to count as physical education credit, which I think is really good for any, any student that isn't necessarily overly excited by the traditional phys ed class. There's, there's options for everybody now. There are some updates there and in world language, we have a class, Spanish for fluent speakers. It's also sometimes known as a heritage Spanish class for our students that come into our school already bilingual and typically they are already past the level of Spanish 1, 2 or 3 where they would normally be placed. French 1 honors, Spanish 1 honors, we're adding honors sections to those. And we have our ongoing partnership with the UMass Public Media Center for morning announcements and TV production. And actually, Kayler is in our morning announcements class, which I think is why he's so good at public speaking.
Great. Okay, any questions for Mr. Rassanen? Yes, Ms. Cormier.
How many, are there new positions included in this? And if so, how many?
It's dependent on demand for the courses. The, the dance program is new, but we're trying to see how we can manage that internally.
That position we had, we had put into the budget last year and we did that through and actually an allocation of, of existing positions because it would not be a full-time, I think we were looking at a.
Point two.
Point two. Which we would, you know, we would reallocate from, for other courses. We did not have enrollment and so one of the things that we did to try to see if we could increase enrollment is, is that there is, again, for the graduation requirements, it's a pretty high graduation requirement in the wellness and physical education. So, by linking this as one of those options, our hope is that we can increase enrollment. But because that was a position that we had passed last year but didn't fill, we would, we do have within the ability to reallocate them in high school for, for that. So, it would not be a full-time. We would be doing this entirely at about a point two.
But I mean, for the whole document? Do we have, no?
No, no other.
That's it.
Positions needed, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cormier.
And I would say too, as, you know, a testament of, a lot of this, really this, this comes first from what students are asking for, what teachers are saying that they want to teach. Like I said, Francine comes in and she met with, with the staff at the high school and and so the courses that came through, through with the early college are courses that our, educators are saying that they want to teach really. And so, this is a testament of what kind of, what the staff are looking to teach. And so, I think that, of course, as new courses come in, there might be some that happened this year that aren't happening because we're going on this course because of what students are signing up for, but it isn't new staff. It's just maybe kind of an allocation of what they're teaching.
Great, thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Rassanen on the program of studies?
Well, not on the program of studies, but I was mentioning tonight about the internship. Can you just give us highlights, a little bullets about what that is and so for kids that are entrusted, parents might want to have details that they really.
Yeah, so this program's been going on for a while, well before my arrival and it's, I think the vast majority of our senior class participates. So, basically, there's one of our assistant principals, Ed McGuire runs it and students find something they're interested, they, it's entirely student-driven, which is the nice thing. And they, if there's something that they're interested in, they go do it. And we monitor and track progress and at the end of the, towards the end of the year, there's a, almost like a career fair where students show off what they did. And we have a good number of kids that have internships at elementary schools. We have a lot of students that end up, a lot really deciding that they want to be an elementary school teacher or a teacher and some that decide there that they don't.
Right.
Which is a good place to find that out. But there's, there's all sorts of different options that kids end up doing. And as Kayler said, we have a lot of students that might have a really heavy course load with AP courses and so the AP test is at the, you know, the May, so they can't really miss that class. So, it's not necessarily available to some students, but any senior who is interested in participating and is in good academic standing is eligible.
Is there a sign-in, sign-out type of, so kids, we know they're actually doing something, not?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mr. McGuire and the senior team, they, they follow up, they will do pop-ins to make sure kids are there.
Okay.
But the feedback we've gotten from the placements has been really positive.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any more questions? Mr. Lipsit and Ms. Wetzel?
Sort of along the same lines. I was wondering if you might go into a little more detail on Honors Independent Research course or offering. It seems like a really potentially exciting opportunity for students to pursue a particular passion. Were there, are there particular students already who have ideas about what they might pursue? I'm curious as to how this came about and then whether there were particular projects and whatnot.
Yeah, no, this is, it's really exciting and one of the reasons where the, or one of the things that generated this course is we have a huge amount of students that take as many science courses as they can get their hands on. I think last year, the graduating class, there were almost dozens and dozens of students who went to college for engineering, for, you know, biomedical research, for different things. And so, this is designed to give students a little bit of freedom to pursue something that they're interested in or students that have honestly gotten to the point where they've exhausted a lot of our higher level courses and, or are really interested in an area of science or technology or engineering that just isn't offered or we can't run as a full course, they can pursue that on their own.
Are there opportunities outside of STEM as well? Is this something that could be applied to other, other disciplines?
Yeah, right now, it's, the prerequisites are science-based, but is what I was able to see even from the early college presentation, that there's a lot of flexibility there. Basically, if there's an interest from our students, then we can make it work.
Awesome.
So, this, this can absolutely expand to really any department that there's interest.
He wants history, I'm just, I'm getting there.
I will say this, I had a similar thing when I was in high school and I took advantage of it for theater, so.
Oh, okay.
But yes, it's a really wonderful opportunity and I'm glad to see it in here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit. Any more questions? Oh, yes, Ms. Wetzel.
Thanks. This actually goes back to the internships. I just had a couple of questions about those. When our students are in those internships, are they receiving like job support, training and then do they work with their employer after graduation for maybe potential job opportunities and/or what additional training they might need after high school?
Yeah, so we don't have job coaches per se assigned to seniors that are doing internships. This is more about career discovery, career exploration. I think with any internship, there's a possibility of staying on if, if students are interested in doing that, but the goal of this is to, as seniors are getting close to graduation, to expose them to things that they might be interested, to see what a workplace is like if students haven't had a job before. But the, a lot of times what happens is, is the placements that will try to hang on to kids, we have had students that have ended up just staying. But, and a lot of, a lot of the internships are degree-dependent.
Right.
So, you know, they, they can't just stay at the Shamrock and teach third grade after high school, although some of them would like to, but it gives them a really good idea of what they want to do with their lives.
That's fantastic. I think it goes to along with what Ms. Gustafen said prior to you talking, was working with some of the industry partners inside of our city and really helping our students explore what we have in our backyard and opportunities for them either after high school or after college.
Yeah.
Which is wonderful. And actually, I was speaking with Ms. Whipple at the high school and her students also participate in work training programs as well, which I thought was fantastic. If you want to talk a little bit about that, I think it'd be nice if you could.
Yeah, so, yeah, so students are our transitional education program. They go out to work sites a couple of times a week and they also run a, basically an in-house coffee shop, which is really good. If you ever need a cup of coffee, you can come get one at the high school. But yeah, there's, there's opportunities for every student in the building, depending on what they're looking for and what they're after.
Great, and the coffee's fantastic, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. Okay, anything else for Mr. Rassanen? Just, we had a brave young woman come and speak to us tonight, I just wanted to make sure that you heard that.
I did, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I appreciate hearing from Cassidy. She, it takes a lot of courage to come up here.
No, and I, the committee fully appreciated it, just wanted to make sure we closed the loop that, since you happened to be here.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Okay, I will accept a motion to approve the program of studies.
Salute.
Second, any discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the ayes. All right, the ayes have it. That passes. Thank you, Mr. Rassmanin.
Thank you.
All right. That's it. Don't move your chair. All right. Moving on to fiscal year 26 update. Dr. Crowley?
Sure.
Looks like we're gearing up for a slideshow.
All right. All right. Okay. Yeah, I can drive it. Okay, so I, sorry, I was waiting for the slide deck to arrive. I'm going to turn it over to Director Finance and Operations momentarily, Mr. Dizio. He's in his second year here in Woburn. He's a Woburn Memorial High School graduate, so he's putting his math skills to work on behalf of the city. And so tonight is the first public showing of our FY26 document for what our budget might look like. Before we get there, I do want to say that I am deeply appreciative of the city and the school committee's support of last year's FY25 budget. I know that it was a process to get to the finish line, but when we approved or the city council approved a budget for the school system, it was incredibly transformative. And so I'm saying that because I recognize that we can't do that every year, but on Fridays, and I'm looking over and I do see some city councilors here, the mayor and I typically meet Fridays at 9:30 and tour every one of our schools. It rotates around, so, and I believe that every one of the city councilors here has been on one of those tours, as have some of the school committee members. And I'm giving that context because I think when we start looking at a budget, we're looking at numbers and we should be looking at kids and staff. And so moving forward, I'm going to ask Alex to put pictures of students and staff in any budget presentation because we need to humanize this. It is a number, I get that, but we are talking about people and both adults and children. And I feel like sometimes it gets lost when we start talking about a budget, but we're talking about people. And so I just wanted to contextualize that, say, the school's FY25 budget has landed well and we are doing great things for kids. I think you've heard some of that tonight. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to you, Alex, to walk through where we are now.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Crowley. So first and foremost, as we build our FY26 budget, we keep in mind the strategic plan and vision. And while I won't read this entire thing to you, Woburn Public Schools is an innovative district dedicated to the success of all of its students. We do that in three priority areas. First, incorporating routine collaboration time into the day. Second, building tiered systems of support. And three, building systems and structures to support deeper learning and effective instructional practices. So taking a look at some key sort of figures from FY25 into FY26 and the numbers that you see here, so this represents the percentage increase year over year. So 6.2% is our roll forward number of salaries only and level funding everything else. Taking that a step further, 7.6% is our roll forward number from FY25 to FY26 with both salaries and out of district tuitions, transportation for both special education, general ed, and homeless transportation, and then the utilities you see listed there, electricity, gas, and phones. So all that being said, and again, this is, you know, very much a draft, as we sit here today, our FY26 proposed budget is $98,163,597. That represents an increase year over year of 8.63%. So one of the things I like to do is to take a deep dive into what sort of drives that number. And again, we're talking strictly the year over year increase here. And again, that number is 7.8 million when we look at the dollar increase from FY25 to FY26. I've said this a couple of times now, but it's worth reiterating. One of the good things that came from this budget cycle was being able to nail down the general education transportation early this year. That resulted in some competition too, which is always a good thing. And the end result was about a 10% decrease in our transportation cost. That's a big number when you put it into dollars. We're looking at about a $200,000 decrease year over year in general ed transportation by working to get that number down and getting that bid out early. We were also able to, through the curriculum, excuse me, through the curriculum department, decrease within that department, some of those funds will be used, and Courtney can talk a little bit more to this maybe, to fund additional interventionists throughout next year. When we look into the big drivers for this year, 60% of this is salary driven. So about $4.7 million of that 7.8 million increase is salaries. This year, we have an increase for COLAs of about 3%. It's 2.5 to start the year and then additional 0.5 about halfway through. When you build in steps, longevity, things of that nature, that gets you to the 60% budget increase. Now moving counterclockwise here around this pie chart, the next bucket is the post-July 1 ads. So these are necessary positions that were added during the school year, really based on enrollment or required services for students. A couple of these include a high school science and a high school math teacher. Again, that was based on enrollment and the contractual number of students per teacher. We did add a district data and accountability manager during the year. In FY25, this was grant funded. Part of that will need to come back into the budget for FY26. The next few ads were restoring a prior, from a prior year, a calendar year admin assistant at the high school. And then we did have some mandated special education ads. These were all based on enrollments and IEP services needed for our students. They included a BCBA, two-Paris, a game teacher, and a reading coach. Continuing to move along here, we get into the special education increases. The biggest one there is transportation. We see a year over year increase of $900,000 and that was caused by NRT, those vans going up 20% year over year. So that was a big contractual increase. When we get into the special education line items, again, a contractual increase here was the out of district tuitions. We saw a $406,000 increase here, driven largely by a 9% SEEM collaborative tuition increase. So that was a huge driving factor there. And then the rest of this is some small increases in hearing, vision, technical services, and therapeutic supplies. Continuing along the pie chart here is the newly arrived grant. So with these funds projected to be expiring, we need to remove the offset that was placed in this budget last year, which was a $600,000 offset. Getting into some of these smaller, excuse me, smaller sort of ones that don't have numbers attributed to them, the first is electrical line increases of about $100,000. We are seeing a, expected about 4.6% price increase plus demand in delivery. So we went up about 5% there. Likewise, with the building services line, we went up $100,000. This is really just each system in our building is a year older and needs more repairs and maintenance and the cost of both materials and labor continue to increase. One of the other ones is, so sickly buyback retirements, this is sort of twofold. First, we see a year over year increase of $55,000. That's driven largely by the fact that we have 20 retirements coming in FY26 and a lot of them at the elementary level. I think 12 of those are at the elementary level. Another one is 403B, a year over year increase of about $100,000 due to increased number of employees and some increasing management fees. The rest of this is basically hitting the supplies and services and I'll touch base on a few of these. This is kind of, everything else that isn't on this screen or that I haven't talked about falls within this, but some of the big drivers there, custodial and maintenance supplies, again, just going up there on the cost of, everything is increasing. Technology, software. So we did have, new this year, Microsoft is actually going subscription based, so that's going to be an ongoing cost going forward. We did have some Power School programs, which were largely hitting the newly arrived grant in prior years that we're going to have to move over. Those include special programs, which tracks IEPs and 504s, e-collect, which collects emergency contact information, and we also run our Power School enrollment through there and our Power School PD. So that was to the tune of about $100,000 that we'll need to account for within the tech budget. Another item that we have coming in that I'm actually working on now is getting open architects up and running. This is a financial dashboard that will help us provide reports and updates throughout the year and really do a good job tracking that, something that I'm working with the city on. The IT director over there, making sure we get MUNIS access and getting that updated. That is a price tag of about $25,000. And one thing, so we looked at give and take a little bit too, so one of the things that we did through the service lease agreements line is we looked to move some of these lines to the technology budget. We were able to decrease by the same amount within the service lease agreements by $90,000. So you will see an increase on the technology software licenses, but that's partly offset by a decrease on the service lease agreements. And then lastly, or actually, two more things, sorry. We are going up slightly on substitutes by about $100,000. Just continue to have the need for that and I think it can be used in part to address some building sub asks as well. And then I should mention that as we talk about the regular ed transportation, the homeless transportation is going to go up slightly by $50,000. It's just such a volatile line year over year that, you know, to make sure that we continue to address it, I think we do need a slight increase there. And then that's the budget drivers. I'll quickly address the components before I turn it over for questions, but it's a similar story from last year. 75% of this budget is salary driven and when you really look at the other components of it, you're looking at another 16% that's made up of other contractual obligations such as transportation, utilities, and out of district tuition. That leaves about 9% for everything else. When you look at supplies, other operational costs, including facilities and technology support, so sort of 9% of this, I would say, is not necessarily contractual.
Thank you, Mr. Dizio. I appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Dizio on where the budget's at this point? Could the administration clarify what the next steps are in the budget or the budget process?
I'm sorry, Ms. Chisholm, you had a question? I mean, through budget, through our finance, we did get a list of the asks for this year. I don't know if that was given to everybody.
We can share that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we can send that to everybody.
Okay, with an update of one that has been removed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that would be great. Just the positions that, you know, to keep the school going in the direction that we want it to go and the help that is needed. And I will say like through budget, he pretty much took my minutes, so we can skip me. But one of the things that I personally would like to see is the building subs and you've guys have all heard me say that it's, I think that being able to get somebody to, into a school every day, if not at least four days a week, that is familiar with the school and that the students and staff get very familiar with, I think that's something that would be helpful if nothing else, because there are days when the kids don't get to see an actual teacher in front of them. So it's, would be something that I'm pushing for, so I'll need support on that when we come to that.
Thanks for the heads up. Vice Chair Chisholm, Ms. Wetzel.
Just to what Vice Chair Chisholm said, we toured the Shamrock last week Friday and Mr. Clark showed us what he has to do when he doesn't have, when a teacher calls out sick and it's a copy paste sort of situation where he's trying to play like a roulette game or something and
Gymnastics, I think he called.
Yeah, there you go. That's it. And he has to do this every single day because they're always having people call out. So I agreed to have an in-building sub, would save him a lot of time and it would also help our educators inside the building because they're familiar with this person. This person's familiar with the kids and the educators there, so it just makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Ms. Wetzel. Ms. Cormier?
When can we expect the spreadsheet version of the document, the budget, like the full?
When are we going to get the big thing?
Oh.
Yeah. It used to be a binder.
If not today, first thing tomorrow morning.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dizio. I appreciate it. Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So last year, it was my first year experiencing the budget and from what I was told, it was a historical number that we initially asked for. And those of you that remember, I was okay sending the full budget because I asked a specific question was, is this what we need or is this what we want? And I believe I was told that it's contractual. In other words, this is what we need, this is what the state requires us to do. So the reason I'm speaking is because I want to amplify that this, from what I'm hearing, is what we need. And I'm specifically saying that because of the people that's here, my fellow councilmen, I want them to hear that this is what we need. This is not what we want. And as hard as it is to have this conversation around budget, this is, this is a serious matter that we need to run our schools effectively and I just wanted to say that because I really feel like it's needed. Because I have heard conversations as if, again, you guys know I'm all about love and I hear a lot of head bumping and I'm like, okay, it's not us against them, it's us together and I wish we can get away from us against them. If we are caring about our students, then we will take this seriously and acknowledge this is something that's needed to run our schools effectively. So I just wanted to say that I think it's necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Yes, Maureen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to take a minute and I see that we have members of the city council here tonight and I wanted to take a quick minute to, again, thank you for your support last year. I would like to personally invite any of you, if you would like to tour any of the special education programs and your schedules are tricky, please reach out to me and I would be happy to work with you on a, on a time that is convenient for you if you would like to see any of them. I also would like to mention that with respect to the two lines that were noted, the special education transportation line is up approximately $900,000. That's what is the budgeted increase and that is simply due to the contractual increases with North Reading Transportation, which is a contract that is held through SEEM. It's what the contract is essentially and, you know, there really isn't a lot we can do about that. With respect to the out of district tuitions, I would like to just point out and to all of you that the, our member rate went up 8.94% at SEEM Collaborative, which is where many of our students are. If you actually take a look at what we have projected for the out of district tuitions, the actual increase is under 4%. And the reason for that is because we have really, with your support, worked on building longer term solutions and our programs are, have really improved. We have a lot of students with high needs and we are doing a really nice job educating them here in Woburn. And so what you're actually seeing is, is some of the results of the, what you allocated last year coming to fruition. Our out of district tuitions, the increase is actually quite low relative to what it would be if we weren't able to educate many of our students here. And I think that there's a lot of value of having our students here in the community and when you a lot of value of having our students here in the community, and when you go and you actually see the kids, and I know someone, it may have been Kim who talked a little bit about, or Mr. Rasson and some of our transitional ed students, but, you know, they were, they were at the Burlington Mall and at Target, and they were out on shopping missions and, you know, stocking up the morning brew with some different things. And some of the work that our very dedicated staff are doing in these programs makes an enormous difference for our students in preparing them to live in the world when they, you know, are young adults. And so I just wanted to take a minute and point out that when you look in, I know Mr. Malrennan, you often mentioned that, you know, we want to see data points and different things in terms of the investments that are made, and you made an investment last year, and I do think that that is one data point that is absolutely worth noting, and you see that in the very minimal increase, especially given that the percentage of tuition increase is almost 9%. So thank you for your support.
Thank you for saying that, Assistant Superintendent Ryan. Are there any further, Mr. Malrennan?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. If I could, to Ms. Ryan's point, again, it was discussed, I'll bring up during my minutes for the SSA Subcommittee, the cooperation and collaboration they're doing with Ms. Ryan and city council members as well here tonight, and Charlie Doherty at the City Hall. The tuition-based things, the special ed budgets, things like that, that maybe surprising tonight to hear, but I understand from Ms. Ryan that her and Mr. Doherty, you know, there are a level that you can't believe as far as what's going on numbers-wise, so that no one's going to be shocked and surprised as to the numbers that she presents and the reasoning behind it all. So that was something that also came out of last year's budget is, you know, we're going to get more involved with what's happening, and, you know, the special ed budget was one of those things. And again, as far as the budget tonight presented by Mr. Dizio, it was just a draft budget. Other members will get the rest of his sheets. Ms. Chisholm talked about some of the asks and the removal things that we had, and the question I had during the presentation this week, or last week, whenever it was, from Mr. Dizio was, this budget doesn't include, as one of the speakers tonight indicated, any costs with deportables, any costs associated with redistricting, and we're going to go with any of that. This is just to open schools in the fall of next year, is my understanding. So other associated costs will come up later, but I think, you know, it's good to realize that this is the budget to open the schools in the fall, and other associated costs will come up as we discuss further tonight, as a matter of fact. That was just, you know, my thoughts on that. Ms. Chisholm had the building substitutes coming in, and lots of things that other members will get, perhaps, you know, that they're going to highlight themselves to get to Mr. Dizio, to get to Ms. Chisholm, the finance group as well, to hash around different ideas and different thoughts. But initially tonight, this is, you know, as Mr. Austin said, this is, you know, it's what we, what we need, not what we want. It's to open up, this is what we need, and I just appreciate all the work behind it. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Malrennan. Okay. Any further questions, Mr. Dizio? Yes, Mr.?
Just to sort of tack on to Mr. Malrennan's question, I wonder if we could get just a little bit of thought in terms of, you know, obviously, redistricting is very much a changing or evolving issue right now, but I wonder if we could talk a little bit about what the potential impacts might be on the budget and how we can think about those as we move forward.
So we're actually taking, taking it independent at the moment because it's hard to plan a budget, and to Mr. Malrennan's point, the operating budget for FY '26 is always separate from a capital budget that, you know, and typically, the capital budget includes roofs and things of that nature. And so I think that if there's clarity to be gained relative to the redistricting about what direction we go, the budget will reflect it. We're not at the point right now where we can reflect anything because we still have a lot of question to be answered.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to respond especially to the public comment that we had on this.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsett. Vice Chair Chisholm.
Well, just to add to that, on our first meeting on the 20th, the mayor and Charlie Doherty and Chris Kissel were present with us, so they saw what we saw for the first look, so they know what we're looking at, so hopefully they can spread the word too. It's a work in progress, and we'll get there.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the Finance Department headed by Vice Chair Chisholm, who's doing the hard work. Appreciate it.
And just if memory serves, the number has come down.
Yes, Mr. Lipsett.
I apologize. The number has come down a little bit since that meeting as well, so this is an evolving budget.
Yes. Dr. Proud.
Can I, yeah, so the answer is yes, right? So we met last Thursday morning, I believe, for Finance Subcommittee, and that's when the mayor and City Hall people were here. That was Thursday of vacation week, so we met with the principals earlier this week, directors to touch base. We had another Subcommittee, Finance Subcommittee meeting, and so every time we have a conversation, we are trying to look at ways to make this the most real number that we possibly can. And so, you know, things, things do change because, as an example, as a result of the Subcommittee meeting that we had earlier this week, it became evident that the building subs wasn't, was an issue that had some support. Conversations with the principals also bore that out, like, they felt pretty strongly about that, and so those kinds of adjustments get, get put in. I think there's a $100,000 increase on the sub-line item as a result of that. Is that enough for the, you know, like, these kinds of things are still work in progress.
Great. All right, moving on, I think we're done with that. Okay. We have redistricting updates. We are going to talk about modulars, and we're going to be talking about the refinement of guiding principles for redistricting. I just want to let the committee know that what we are expecting when we talk about the refinement of guiding principles is an actual work product where the guiding principles are ranked in order of prominence, what we want, what is the most important thing down to what is the least important thing. That is the goal, so I want you to start thinking about it now because we're going to need a lot of contributions from all the members so we have a good, solid guiding principles, which will be absolutely necessary to give to the consultant so that she can elaborate on the maps. All right? So that's just giving you a little boost, adrenaline on that. But first, we go to here for modulars, about modulars.
Jean, what, what? What do we?
She's moving it up.
Oh, sorry. You're going to drive your own?
I guess.
So anyway, while, while we're getting set up, I can talk for a minute. At the last school committee meeting, one of the major items of discussion were modular classrooms, and I think I articulated that there's 37 of the modulars that are available to us at the NOSAT public schools. They have, they're currently in use. NOSAT is going through a phased renovation at their high school. We were down, we visited the modulars in November. I think Mr. Austin, Ms. Wetzel, and Mr. Lipsett and I toured the modulars. I've been in contact with NOSAT a couple times since. They are still an option because I have not a lot to do on the weekends. This past Saturday, I went there again. I confirm they're still there. But the, the real question that came up last week was, from Ms. Chisholm especially, like, tell me more, like, you're throwing out a big number and why? And so I'm saying that because over the past week, I appreciate the fact that, it's more than a week, but Mr. Burnham, who's the Director of Facilities, and I have been going back and forth on what this might look like for tonight, to try to answer some of these questions for you. Before he gets started, I do want to go and just publicly say, I recognize that this is an expensive option to be considered. I also think it's the best option to redistrict. I think it buys the city time to build a school in North Woburn with an ECP attached. I think it allows for the cleanest redistrict, and so I, recognizing that there's, there's an expense attached to that, and I don't want to prejudice to the school committee, but I do want you to know exactly what I'm thinking as it relates to redistricting. We were solving last year and this year for a space problem, if you think about the predicament that we were in. It's a space issue. We have 13 ECP classrooms, soon to be 14, and that number isn't going down, and so without additional space, we need to be creative, and this modular option presented itself, and it's taken almost a life of its own, but I think it's worthwhile because I do think that it allows for the city and the school department to consider something that they last year wouldn't have been able to consider because it didn't exist. And so with that being said, I'll, I'll stop and let, let Lenny Burnham, who's, again, the Facilities Director, go through some of the slides, but I'll jump in and we'll try to tag-team this.
Yeah. As Dr. Crowley said first, you know, thanks for having me. We were asked to look at what the costs would be, so these modulars, what you see in this slide, is the current configuration that they are in NOSAT. We would try to keep that current configuration because it's the most cost-effective way. We would look at trying to just basically pick it up in pieces and move it here. If we were to change it, the cost, the design costs go way up, so, and the construction costs. So that's one of the factors that we looked at when we did it. The unit costs, we're estimating that we can get the unit for around $100,000. That's not ironed out, that's not a hard number, but that's where we feel like the negotiations at at the moment. Dr. Crowley's like a used car salesman when it comes to the models.
I can get them.
I don't know if I like that.
Superintendent, car salesman.
So, well, no, I, I think my line was, I'm not going to negotiate against myself.
Yeah.
Right? So.
If I could, Madam Chair, it should be interruption, Mr. Burnham.
Of course.
Again, going back to, you know, the phrase used car, so a lot of these sit at NOSAT, they need them off the property. Am I correct?
Correct. If, if, if someone doesn't purchase them by, or make an agreement to purchase them by the end of the school year, they will be demoing them because they, they have to get them off their property.
They need their space for another build.
Right. Now, we, we're not the only people interested in it, but we're the most attractive option for them.
Of course we are.
Of course we are.
That's what we call leverage. All right, so let's let Director Burnham finish his presentation.
So you're basically talking about 37 individual units that are 17 feet by 37 feet, a total of 32,000 square feet. Most of them are fall in a five-year-old category. I myself have not seen them in person. Dr. Crowley and a few of the school committee members have. They can attest to the condition, but by what everyone has said, they're in very good condition. It's, you know, there's a varying group of what's in there, six classrooms with restrooms, six regular classrooms that don't have, there's staff restrooms, but 20 classrooms of more than 800 square feet, six classrooms between 5 and 600 square feet, breakout spaces, nurse's office, admin area, reception area, and all the rest that goes along with it. They're completely electrified, so heating and cooling is all done using air-source heat The transportation is a big expense, right? They have to be broken down, wrapped up, brought here to Woburn. We need a site to put them on or a site to store them at. Not, not ideal because that would change the costs. The costs that we know are there, like $500,000 to move them, 1.2 million to break them down and reassemble them, approximately a million to 1.7 for foundations. That, a lot depends on the soil conditions and the locations that's chosen. And then there's a bunch of extra costs that we can't price at the moment because we don't know where they would go. That, and that means, you know, power, water, sewer, et cetera. We did have Denisco Design look at doing a feasibility study for us to tell us the best location, and I can, we'll show you some of the sites that they looked at just quickly, but the cost would be around $30,000 for them to look at our locations and pick the best location based on soil conditions, utilities, traffic, parking, et cetera. One of the things that we talked about with Denisco, and we were looking at the location, is an ECP requires more parking than a regular program does. There's a lot more staff. The drop-off and pickup is, if anyone has been to an elementary school, that drop-off and pickup, an ECP is worse, right? So, you know, connecting it to an existing building, everyone asked me that, if we did that and it's an older building, we would be required to bring that building to code. So if we were to do it here at this building, we would have to sprinkle the entire building, and everything would be, so it's unlikely we would find a location where we could physically connect it to a building. And there's other things, playground equipment, you know, et cetera, et cetera. We, you know, we just don't know because we don't know the site. This is basically the layout of what NOSAT has now. You know, it's kind of a quick look at it, but it, I think it's pretty functional from what everyone said who was there. Denisco Design did a couple preliminary designs. I know these aren't great to see. This is one design that they looked at using the field next to the Kennedy. It's, you know, it's a field that's just grass.
Wet one? Go ahead.
The wet one, right?
Yes. And again, that's why I say there's so many questions about what can and can't be done. This is another one that they did, which was the Reeves, and I think most of us who've been over there know that that's ledge.
Yeah.
So, you know, there'll be, that's why you can't predict the foundation cost. Again, that's a look at what the admin area is pretty much on the, the NOSAT side, and again, we want to pick everything up and bring it here. We did with Dr. Crowley look at some of the other things that have been brought up, which I think everybody knows these, right? Denisco's feasibility study looked at what it would cost to bring the Linskey-Rumford up to a usable level, or the old Wyman. Those options are 20 million and 23 million to get 18 classrooms plus or 16 classrooms plus. I think you're getting more for less money on this option, and those other sites also have the same problems. Parking, I mean, there's only 35 parking spaces at the Linskey now. If you're looking for double, I don't know where you'd find that, and a drop-off and pickup are challenging at both locations. Think I've covered most of what, you know, we've gone over? You know, if there's any questions or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be questions, and I'm happy to help you answer if I can. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lipsett?
First of all, thank you for, for putting this together. This answers a lot of questions, and I hope provides a lot of clarity for people in terms of what we're looking at, both cost-wise and in terms of the layout. On the layout, you, I think we're indicating that any reconfiguration of the way that NOSAT has set these up would be an additional cost.
Correct. So as it stands right now, J&amp;J Construction, which is in North Bill我记得, did the design and setup. Actually, Flansburgh did the engineering design, who's done some of our schools. And so if we can take their current plans and just adapt them to Woburn, the cost savings is dramatic because we don't have to have a full engineered design done. If we change the configuration, that would require us to redesign the whole plans.
This, sort of a question for, for Ms. Ryan and administration, does, does the current layout that NOSAT has, I mean, is that something that we feel would work for an ECP?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a particular reason why we might need to reconfigure for ECP purposes rather than what NOSAT has, just to make sure that what we have is.
Yeah, I mean, I've only seen the pictures, but I think it's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
More questions? Ms. Wetzel?
Yeah. Thank you, Lenny, or Mr. Burnham, for putting this together. Appreciate it. I had a question about if we were to do a feasibility study with Denisco Designs, and that would be specifically for a location?
Correct.
And about how long would that take should we decide we wanted to do that?
They know that, you want to answer, they know that we're in a rush and, and that we would need that right away, so I don't want to put an actual date on it, but they would put it to the front because soil testing is a big answer to that, and that's something that would have to physically be done. We'd have to take samples around the locations that they thought were a best fit.
In speaking with Denisco, they indicated within 30 days, if, because, understanding that we are looking at this urgently, the designs that Mr. that we are looking at this urgently. The designs that Mr. Burnham just showed, they just did that because they were curious. We haven't paid them anything, and I'm saying that because the modulators can go anywhere like that. So I don't want people to think like we've predetermined where these modulators go. So that's, I just want to, again, reiterate that because I think the ECP Task Force talked about them at the Reeves', the indoor, the Kennedy, and that, like, that's how that came about.
Got it. Is it recommended, would you say, to have a feasibility study done? Because would we need to test soil and those sort of things?
Yeah. I mean, I think the feasibility study would have to be done because foundations, that the cost, you see the cost change from less than a million to almost two, based on soil conditions, right? So if we have good soil conditions, we could save a lot of money. That's one aspect to it. And there's, you know, I'm not an engineer. I don't, I'm sure there might be engineers in here, but there's things that we're not thinking of. That's their job, to make sure that it finds the best location for us. So for the smallest amount of money in this entire project, I think having somebody who knows Woburn and knows our buildings, you know, Denisco has an upper hand. They've done the feasibility on all of our buildings, so they know what we have. So they're the best one, I think, to make that decision.
I, yeah. I mean, I feel like I'm not an engineer by any means, but that, to me, makes a lot of sense, and I feel like if we're looking to spend this much money, we should be intentional with where we're placing them and make sure we're doing all the crossing our Ts., et cetera.
Correct.
And I just was looking at the, I know this was just kind of put out there on where potential ideas of where these could go based on what we talked about at the ECP Task Force, but for any parents that might be looking at, thinking specifically Reeves' parents, caregivers, I noticed, and I know this was very random, but they were placed over like where the playground, et cetera, would be.
Correct.
So I just wanted everyone to be clear that this was just put on a piece of paper.
Denisco did it on their own, one of the few things we haven't paid for, right?
Okay.
So, you know, and like, we didn't endorse it. They just sent it along, so we thought we would share it.
Okay. So we're not looking at putting them on top of the playground?
No.
Just in case anyone was wondering. Okay, good.
Good, good call.
Yeah, no problem. And then something else I wanted to mention when we were talking about other buildings that we already have inside of our city that could potentially house an ECP. If we're looking at North Woburn, the Linscott, if we were to invest that amount of money and put an ECP there, and we want to build North Woburn schools, and it's been said before, but it does take away the student population of that school, so you wouldn't, if you used MSBA funding, be able to use all, both schools combined because one of them would be an ECP, so you'd have less students, so you would be building a smaller school in an area that might see an influx of students.
Correct.
So I think it's just something for us to keep in mind as we're looking at all this. I think that's it for now? I'm sure I'll think of more.
All right. Ms. Wetzel? Questions? Modulators? Mr. Austin?
I just wanted to, I guess, gain some additional clarification. As far as location, I know you don't, I know the school that we chose is not necessarily it. Have you guys thought about other locations in the city or...
Absolutely. We've, you know, we've talked about every school extensively. It's just, you know, we're talking about every school, but we don't really know what the best fit is. So that's why we would want the feasibility study, right? To have someone weigh out all the options for us and kind of present it in a way, you know, as an example. A sewer connection, you know, you don't know where the sewer connections are in every location, but that's, you know, you have to get rid of what's in the bathroom, so we need a sewer connection. These all require three-phase power, so that's another consideration that we have power available to the location that we're going to put it at, along with all the other things that go along with it. Playgrounds and parking and, you know, et cetera.
I was wondering, does it have to be a school site? I know we had a school recently demolished, maybe that school site. I believe it's the old...
So...
Hurd.
Old Hurd.
The old Hurd. So the only reason we've chosen a school site is because when you look at this, they don't have everything in the building, right? There's not a gym space, there's not a cafeteria space. Not that you have to have that, but if it was next to a building, they would have access to that. Auditorium for whatever events they wanted to do, a shared combined playground. So those things are the reasons you'd probably want it next to a school. When you talk about the Hurd space, there's, they took grant money for that to make that park, so I don't know if the city would have to, you know, yeah, right? I don't think that they could possibly put it there.
Gotcha.
It's open space.
Yeah.
Thank you. No, I'm not trying to take away open space. I'm just...
No, no.
Just clarifying.
No, that's a good question, Mr. Austin. Excellent question, actually. Any more questions on modulators? Yes? Vice-Chair, just a...
I mean, if we got the money, the allocation approved to do this, how long would this take?
So we would need an answer very soon. You know, if it's 30 days for a design, then we would still have to get the existing plans tailored to our foundation location and parking, et cetera, and then that would all have to go out to bid, right? So you're bidding the design, you're bidding the transportation, and then bidding the site work. So it'd be a tight timeframe to try to get it done by September.
September.
Yeah. It would be a tight timeframe.
Okay. Ms. Wetzel?
I just actually wanted to follow up on that timeframe, because it would be so tight. Would there be concerns with, if there was a glitch, you know, things don't necessarily always go as planned, that say, yes, we get them, we're on this tight timeline to turn these around for September? If there was any, I don't know if you can speak to this, but if there was something that went wrong and we're setback, would that be something that we should think about as we're talking about this?
I mean, there's always something that could go wrong. I mean, they got to come over the Cape Cod Mall bridges, right, and they're working on those.
Yeah.
So, you know, you don't get permits to get over them. Who knows what will happen? But we'd have to come up with a contingency plan. I don't know what that would be. But, you know, every day that we wait makes it more and more difficult to make it happen.
Appreciate that.
Right. That makes sense.
All right. Ms. Wetzel?
And then, Madam Chair, I had a question. If we had specific questions about modulators and what that might do to our redistricting plans, is that, is it now a good time to ask those, or should we wait?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So I did have some. This might be more towards admin. I'm not sure, but...
I think Lenny's doing a great job.
You're on the hot spot. If we cannot get modulators for whatever reason, maybe it's not in the budget, or we can't get them in time, that sort of thing, have we thought, and it was mentioned at public comment, what Plan B would look like, a triage option was used last year? Have we thought of that? Like, would we, for instance, last year, when we couldn't accomplish redistricting, we had to move special education programs to different buildings. Have we looked at that yet, what that would be, or any insight to the committee?
Sure. So we have not looked at moving any special education programs. If the modulators are not an option, one of the things that is a guiding principle, I believe, for tonight is, do you want to keep preschool all in one bill? I don't have the exact verbiage in front of me, but that's, that's something that the, the school committee needs to decide. Is this a priority, whether you have modulators or not? And I think that dictates the next question, right? Because if there's no modulators and you want to keep things all in one building, you would be looking at repurposing another building. That's a, that's a committee decision. So that, I think, would need to be discussed.
Agreed. But even to that note, like, repurposing a building would cost a substantial amount of money, as we see here, more than what the modulators would cost. So it would also have to go, I think, in front of the city council, because we'd need money to do that.
Presumably.
Yeah, I would assume.
Some buildings.
Yeah. Without modulators, what would our ECP program look like next year? Would we be looking at adding on more rooms? And if so, do, would the Reeves of the Shamrock fit those rooms? And if they didn't, do we have a Plan 3?
So I, the answer, and Maureen can correct me if I'm wrong, we can add a class to the Reeves', but we're looking at probably an interior room and/or looking at some of the specials rooms.
So I would expect you will have a 14th preschool room coming online, so that will, that's one for sure. You have the potential of a 15. It's unclear right now if we would be able to get through the year with 14, or whether we would need the 15. And I would anticipate that you would put it at the Reeves', and depending on what you needed for space, I do believe there is one room without an interior room, so a room that does not have windows to the outside, that could perhaps be utilized, although not ideal. And beyond that, you would be looking at taking a special room, is my understanding at this time.
Does the Reeves currently have shared special rooms?
No.
Okay. So then we would be looking at special sharing, music and health, for instance, or library or something like that?
Some type of consolidation.
Okay. And then I guess if we didn't have modulators, I'm sorry, I keep saying this, but would there be some sort of option of like a phased redistrict where we say, okay, we don't have these modulators, but we can move kids, say, Hurd Wyman, we know that they're busting at the same as Malcolm White, the Goodyear. I guess what would be the plan for those schools that are so full with these class sizes that are enormous, borderline, you know, we have a contractual minimum we need to stay under? What would be the plan for those schools? And is there some way we could, you know, do Phase 1, Phase 2 of a redistrict to sort of help navigate this situation?
So I'm going to momentarily ask Ms. Young to speak to this, but the quick answer is, there is, there is a way to do phased redistricting, but you have to agree to both phases right up front. You can't say we're going to do a phased redistrict and then not, like, do Phase 1 and then not Phase 2.
Right.
And so I just want to say that because I don't want you to think you could, like, it's a way to do part of it. You have to kind of agree you're all into the whole thing. So I don't know.
No, what I was just going to add, what I think about with the phase, because I think that you absolutely, we could absolutely, you know, look at components in phase. What I, for me, what I want to be conscientious of is that whoever gets phased in Phase 1, it can't be that then when we decide Phase 2, that those students could potentially be in a space in which they would need to be redistributed to another location. So you need to have some sense of where Phase 2 is going before you do Phase 2, because you want to make sure that where you select to make that, because again, if we're talking, for example, about the Hurd Wyman, there's, you know, it borders different schools, and so what might look good right away is like to move. If the plan is, whatever the set plan is for Phase 2, doesn't actually mean that that would be a make sense, you know, pod to move, we could be potentially having a group of students move year 1 and then year 2. And I think that, you know, no one wants to do that. And so I think that that is the big part for me, is that we can absolutely ask, and I, you know, the consultant to provide for us some options for that. But I think that, you know, when we go back to the guiding principles, I think that there still needs to be a set, that even if we decide the phase, which, you know, absolutely works, that there still needs to be a decision made on what are we thinking that the end would look like in two years, so that the decisions that we're making for this first phase are in line with where we're going.
That makes sense. I mean, I don't think anyone's looking to move kids two times.
No.
Right. I think that would be challenging for everybody.
So what I'm hearing, just to clarify, is that we could, if we don't get the modulators immediately for any reason, we don't have possession of them, but we know we're going to get them. We could have a comprehensive two-year redistricting plan, as long as it's coherent enough that learners are never moved, you know, we're going to move you, and then we're going to move you again. Instead, it would be a two-year redistricting plan. That would be, that could be one Plan B, that Ms. Wetzel introduced.
So if you knew that you were going to build, if you knew that the final plan was going to be a modular-based plan, then you might know where, after the span of two years, all students are intending to move. And so then you could choose to have Group 1 and Group 2.
And just to pull it all together, sorry, Ms. Cormier, I just want to make sure this is clear.
Yeah.
We would need sort of a decision from the powers that be that we can obtain the modulators really, like, very soon, even if we were to do a two-year plan. Like, we would need, we would need an answer on this.
I think regardless of the multi-year phased plan, you, we need to have an idea of where we're intending to be at the end of the two years.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Young. And Mr. Lipsit, and then Ms. Cormier. Is that okay?
I just wanted to clarify yours, if I could.
Oh, yes.
Please. That's assuming that we can't have the modulators this year. Some kind of wrenches in the plan, but that would be assuming, and with permission, to have the modulators for the second year. That's where you're talking about the phase.
Yeah.
Is that that way?
I was just elaborating on Ms. Wetzel's point because I thought it was important.
That's a good option to have.
Thank you, Ms. Cormier.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying me. All right. Mr. Lipsit?
So I just want to make, I'm going to clarify on top of clarification.
Some clarifying.
Yeah, we got to clarify some serious stuff here. It sounds like, I mean, are we saying that a phased-in plan would necessitate having modulators, or is there a potential for a phased-in plan that does not include having modulators as well?
I think that a phased-in plan works as long as, regardless of what the decision is, we just have to know where we're going at the end of the two years.
Okay.
Whether you're going to repurpose one of the buildings, whether you're going to keep everything as is, in order to know which students we can move and not risk that that group of students have to move again, we would want to have an idea of where we're going at the end of year 2. And so I guess where I say with a phased plan, it's a phased plan with a two-year commitment.
Right. We don't do a phased plan where we just decide Phase 1 and cross our fingers for Phase 2.
No. It will be a quick phased plan. You'll be doing it again.
My other question regarding, if, if we have a plan where we can phase something in that includes modulators that is not going to be immediate, right? So we are phasing something in where we know we are going to get modulators, but we can't bring them online immediately in September. You mentioned additional costs for storage. Do you have a sense of what that cost might be?
I don't. I don't because we didn't look at locations. There are locations in Woburn that we could possibly store them, and I don't think the cost would be great, but you're handling them twice.
Right.
So the transportation costs go up. That's, I don't think the storage are as big a cost as the doubling the transportation costs.
Would it be doubling given the distance, or would it be...
Not, it's just anytime you're moving them, you know, there's a cost to moving them.
Getting the trucks.
And because they're, you know, the 12-foot wide is far cheaper than 17 feet.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And so we don't have a clear set of options for, for either, you know, something without modulators right now, or a phased-in option right now. That's something that we can, should the committee determine, get from our consultant. That's the direction that we can give them. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that the public is aware that, you know, we're talking about these. We don't necessarily have set maps on them quite yet, but that that's something that we can direct the consultant to do.
Yes. Step one, to be, to be clear, is to...
Yeah, I got it right.
The guiding principles, like, what is it that you want the consultant to drop up based on the priority of the committee?
Okay.
Well, I think what, and again, I think the prioritization part is important, and I think that this is, again, we talked a lot about this at the subcommittee, and I give the example of that if, you know, three of us sat down to look at maps, and one person was going in and saying that they wanted to make a map in which they moved the least number of people, and another person went in and they said they wanted to draw the cleanest lines, and another person said that they wanted to balance out, you know, for equity. Every single one of us is going to then start and draw completely different maps, right? And all of those things are great things that are part of the current guiding principles, and we want to exist in all of them, but there has to be an order of kind of operations in which which thing is driving that first. And I think that once that part is done, the, kind of the map part is, the drawing part is actually the easier part because you're giving them the map, the guide to go. I think that's the big piece and point of like the phased approach, is that just those three different options would create three very different maps, which would make that the pressure points on the buildings that we're talking about, different pockets that would make sense to move for next year. And so that's where like the guiding principle part, and then what is our plan for the two-year part, really needs to be clear so that we can give you the information that is, helps you make the decision you need to make.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Ms. Wetzel?
I was just actually thinking... I was just actually thinking about too, some things we heard at public comment today in relation to our redistrict, and one of them was the advisory meeting that was canceled this past Monday. I know an email went out to anyone on that committee, but I think it would be nice for the community to hear why we canceled and when the next meeting is.
Yeah, sure. We postponed the meeting, and the meeting is scheduled for March 4th with the consultant. Respectfully to the committee, I wanted you to hear and see the guiding principles before maps were shown to advisory people. I just, I think, without you weighing in on what the guiding principles are, showing maps that may not be something that you even want to consider, made me pause, and I felt like the committee needed to deliberate some of the guiding principles. And I also felt at the last meeting that the committee really needs to gel around redistricting as a concept and support or not support, but, you know, the ECP task force has met multiple times. Modulators were the preferred way to go. We went that way. And then when we meet with the consultant and we're asked, well, what are your guiding principles? How are you going to measure the maps? We get stuck. And so, again, I just respect the committee and I want the committee to have time to deliberate. The maps can be drawn, the maps will be drawn based on what the guiding principles that the committee decides on.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think it's important to note, and Chair Crowley mentioned it as well, that the guiding principles really do help drive what the consultant does when they put the maps together. So, yes, thank you. And then one other thing in regards to the maps, but the component map that we have, a lot of community members have expressed interest, and I agree with them, in having a high-resolution map of that, so you can see where your street falls inside of that component. So then, once we do have map options, you can look and see where you are. So I think it would be nice if we could have the consultant, I think the consultant needs to draw those up for us because it's difficult to know where you are.
Yes, thank you. Just a quick comment. I think we have a space issue, and I think that one of the things that everybody is sort of grappling with is we don't have a lot of good options. We just don't. And I think, you know, with, with respect in terms of some of the questions that people are asking, one of the things that the consultant keeps asking us is, well, we need, the consultant needs direction because we can't underestimate, and I'm looking out at the public, how any maps that are released and go out, these are, these are kids and these are families and these are people, and it's, it's a big deal. And I think that we have to be very, very careful that we're not just throwing out maps and sending families and children into a spiral when it's something that the committee might not ever even consider. And I think that's really important. And if we just said to the committee, well, we want maps, well, the consultant, they could generate 200 maps. They could, but I don't think that's serving anybody well. And I think just, you know, with respect to this whole process, and I go back to, again, it's families and it's children, and it's something that really does impact people. We have some difficult decisions to make, and the first, the first part here is to really prioritize what the committee thinks is the most critical component. And, you know, again, at the subcommittee meeting earlier today, it was, you know, we went around the table, and I said, I'd like clean, and it was just sort of an exercise. I'd like clean maps that are well-distributed, look really nice, and Courtney, Ms. Young said, I'd like to disrupt the least students, and Dr. Crowley said, and I'd like equity, right? And all of these things matter, but we're not going to have all of them because it isn't possible. So we need to go back to, you know, really understanding what the committee's priorities are so that we can then have the consultant draw what you would like. And I think then that's the time where we start going through iterations for the public rather than sharing things with people that will...
Are never going to happen.
Are never going to happen, but that a lot of people will lose sleep over, rightfully so. And that's, that's, I think, you know, the point.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, Assistant Superintendent Ryan. Ms. Wetzel?
I agree. I think that you really nailed it on the head. I think that we don't want to scare people and people, we don't want kids to be stressed out. So I think we keep running back to the same thing, and we got to get these guiding principles ready so then we are all on the same page here in this room, the consultant, the community, to have an understanding of what the goal of this redistrict is, what we're trying to solve and how we're trying to solve it.
Okay.
Ms. Cormier? Can we do that now?
Do what?
To work on the guiding principles?
I think we're still on modulators.
So what is the next step with the modulators?
Okay. So clearly what's happening here, what I'm summarizing, is that if we don't have the space for the pre-K program, ECP, then we have to find it. And if we have to find it, then we are looking at some different kinds of maps. So we're going to have certain maps that we can draw with modulators that seem much more educationally friendly, and then we'll have to do some really thinking, some really hard decisions to find 15 classrooms. And so I think the committee is now faced with what it, whether or not we should acquire the modulators. And that's what, that's where we are right now.
Could I?
Of course you can.
Thank you, Cormier. I didn't know if I was still. So I guess where I am on this at this time is I would like to acquire modulators. I would like to request that we can acquire the modulators and then move forward with the maps. And if we can't acquire them, then we would have to just, I don't think that the other buildings are feasible. Certainly, if we can't get 3.5 to whatever million for the modulators, we're not getting 23 million for the Wyman School. So I guess I would like to know what we should do next as far as requesting that permission.
So I think one could decide to make a motion to authorize me, on behalf of the school committee, to inform the city that we need modular classrooms and to empower me to negotiate on behalf of the school committee.
I will make that motion.
On the motion?
Of course.
Should I need a second first?
No, second.
It makes me extremely nervous with all these unanswered questions out there with the modulators. I mean, I think that if they were in Burlington and we could go see them and we had an open lot of land that we could attach them to, I'd be doing somersaults. But all these, and I keep thinking the Cape in the summer, transporting over a bridge, it may take us till October to get them. So that makes a huge red flag go out to me because the original thought of mine was like, oh, that would be awesome, we can put them all at the Reeves, this is going to work. But as I look at that site, I'm like, where are they going to fit? And we'll have parents in Uproad because they save money and they fundraised for a playground that they can no longer use or it's taken down. And then I think, okay, so we had modules at the clap, it worked. I only, I don't think there was that many at that site, but it did work.
One to 10.
Yeah. So, I mean, we've gone through modulators before.
I was in one.
Yes.
That's why I know.
Yes. So it's just, but it makes me very, very nervous, and I just think before we dig too deep, we can send the chairperson down, and what we need, an answer from the city like yesterday. So, because this is not going to work, but we'll still need to redistrict because it's, any buildings that go up, I've never seen it go mainstreamed and everything work out right away, and I don't think September is going to be something we're going to look at. It's, I just think there's too many things coming to play, and like the Kennedy, as Mr. Mulroney had talked about, that is like a, ducks love that most of the time. So I just think that we need to think hard and long about this because it's going to be a lot of money that eventually will be disposable. And I just, I mean, that also has to be factored in. So there's a lot of things that we can do. We can try, see what comes up with it, but I think that we need to start with a redistricting plan. And I hate the fact that we did this last year, we're doing it again, and when we try again next year to do it, people are going to say, they've said it so many times. We have to make a decision, and it has to go forward. So, I mean, I will go with the motion that we just ask and see what we get, and then I'm sure there's going to be a lot more questions about finances on this and hard numbers because it's a lot of money.
I mean, I could tell you, NOSA did it for a little bit less than $5 million, and they moved them from Lincoln, Mass.
Okay.
A year ago.
But they had an open space that they could put them in.
Correct.
Yeah. See, that's my concern, is do we have a space that would even fit them before we go through this process? Could we test the soil before? Like, some of the things that we could do to say, yes, this is definitely a possibility or this is never going to work?
I mean, I don't think that there isn't a space that we couldn't do it.
Okay.
I think there's multiple spaces.
That we could do.
I don't, yes, I just don't know what the best...
I just, we have a motion. Okay. Right. I just, so on the motion, Ms. Cormier?
Yes. So I think that speaks to the phased-in approach. If we do receive, you know, the funding, and this is a tight timeline, and people are concerned about getting them up here, and, you know, if we can at least get the approval and then find a spot and get that feasibility in, then we can say, okay, if we are concerned about how the time is moving forward, we could do the phased-in approach, do a partial redistrict, and then phase two using those modulators that have now had more, like a year or whatever, to be installed. So I think that that is the first step, you know, figuring out, are we actually going to get them? And, you know, I've said before, I really like the modulators just because they have that longevity, and they're five years old now. These, modules made five years ago are going to last a lot longer than the ones that I work with now, which are decades old and are still being used. And I'm sure that there will be uses for these after we are done with them in 10 or 15 or whenever years that we actually get, if we get an ECP building itself. So there's always going to be a use, someone's always going to need them. We can rent them for housing, I don't know. But, you know, I think it's an investment, and I said to Dr. Crowley, it resources, they are worth how much each? $4 million?
Brand new?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that was what Ms. Wetzel came up with.
So for 18 units, not that anybody was looking to invest in that, but this is a large, you know, equity that the city is getting by obtaining these for the low, low price that Dr. Crowley is going to negotiate with NOSA.
I'm going to put Mr. Burnham in charge of this.
But it's still, you know, that, I think there's, that's valid, is that this is a thing that, you know, we are getting and we're going to have, we're going to get so much use out of potentially, that I think it's a good investment. Thank you.
Ms. Wetzel?
I think on what Ms. Cormier just said, I think when we do go to present this, should the motion pass, we can include uses for them after we're done using them as an ECP. I think the city would like to see that, especially because we understand this is a large investment, so what are our plans for it after admin spaces, whatever, we can think about that. But also, something Ms. Cormier said struck something with me as well. Phased-in approach, or as we're looking at modulators, I think we need to, as a committee, keep in mind too, we have a community that's listening to us, a community that's seeing days tick by, so we need, I think, and I think we're working very hard, and admin's working hard, and this is a toll on them as well. So I think we need to keep that in mind while we're looking at modulators and the timeline on those, the installation of those, and getting all of our ducks in a row, just the people aspect like we talked about earlier.
Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My 11-year-old wants us to buy her new sweatpants, sweat suits, and the first thing I asked her was, is your room clean and do you have space? And it's never a really good answer, right? And so my, I'm for the module, I am, but similar to Ms. Chidna, where are we putting them? We asked this question, I don't know, last school committee meeting. That's my hesitation, is if we're going to ask somebody for, what, $3 million, and we're like, oh, we don't know where we're going to put them at as of yet, I would be a little hesitant. Same with my daughter. I'm hesitant of buying her anything new when you don't have closet space. Where are you going to put it? And that would be a question that I think any, maybe the city councilman might even ask, like, where are they going? So that's my hesitation of going forward. I'm not trying to prolong this whole idea of redistricting. I'm for the redistrict. I need, I need the community to hear that as well, but as I said last year, it's doing it with stride, and it seems like we're rushing again, and it keeps, even the whole idea of moving them, I didn't even think about moving them across the bridge, I didn't even consider that. Now I'm thinking like, okay, that's a complication. I do like what Ms. Cormier says, that there could be equity for these modules. I like that. I agreed with that before. They can be repurposed for something else. I think that's a good selling point, if you will, for the city. That's just my hesitation on going forward, is not knowing where they're going and then having the money, and then it's now, now we're trying to find where they're going. And I feel like that should have been something that we should have been, had an idea some time ago. Also, Ms. Wetzel mentioned that there's community members looking, and so my, again, I'm always for, let's hear their voices, and maybe this is off the motions, that we're looking to, I guess it is, talk about the guiding principles. We got to be voting possibly, but have we listened to the community? What is their input? And I know that's not always popular to hear what some people are saying, and we were elected to make those decisions, but I think as our, as they have elected us, we owe it to them to listen to them. You know, we can't be a good servant if we don't hear the people that we're serving. And if we ignored their voices, then how are we, how are we going to be effective if we don't listen? There's no effective waiter that cannot serve properly, they don't come to the table. And so I think we had to give them a seat at the table to hear them. So that's my words.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Any more on the motion? Yes, Mr. Mulroney?
I think that, you know, the other people have spoken, you know, great presentation tonight by Mr. Burnham, but to bring this down to the city council, how much? We don't know. Where are we putting them? We don't know. Where are we going to store them? We don't know. And the next advisory council, advisory building committee for the redistricting plan is next week, and Ms. Wetzel could probably tell us how many people have emailed her concerns, and we heard some this evening as well, that they still have for, you know, the guiding principles and what the steps are for redistricting. Those people, you know, need to get their voices heard for the guiding principles as well. It's great for us to sit here and come up with our prioritized list, but make sure that these people on the advisory board have a say, because they haven't had a say yet unless I'm wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong. If they've had a say already, I'm happy to move along with their say. So far, I've heard there's one introductory meeting, the second one was canceled, the next one is next week. They need to also present their thoughts and ideas for the fundamentals of the guiding principles to us. Let us hash those again.
This is a modular, this is a vote on modulators.
The modules, I stated it earlier, there's still too many unknowns to go down.
Okay.
We only have Mr. Viola here. I would not be in favor of just going down there and asking the city council and the mayor and the city for, could be $5 million, could be $8 million, could be $12 million. One module falls off the bridge, now we're up to $20 million. We don't know. We don't know. You know, I'd like to support it, you know, for the space issue and make it happen, but not with all these unknowns this evening. So that's, you won't get any support tonight anyway for the modules to go down with the unknowns. Thank you.
Mr. Lipsit?
I don't want to belabor the vote, seeing the time and seeing what else we have to do tonight. I just, I do want to point out, we may not have a precise, exact dollar figure for what the modules will cost, but no building project that's ever proposed has a precise dollar figure for exactly what it will cost when it comes down the pike. We are giving, you know, Mr. Burnham has done a great job putting together our best estimate in terms of what this will be. This is based on a lot of information, a lot of understanding of what goes into the site, what will go into the foundation, what would go into the transportation. Could there be unexpected things? Absolutely there could, right? And, you know, we have to acknowledge that, but that's not to say that we don't know what it will cost. But that's not to say that we don't know what it will cost. We do have, you know, we have at least a workable ballpark that Dr. Crowley can take, Dr. Crowley and Ms. Crowley can take to the city council, can take to the mayor. I think we do need to move on this. Do we know exactly where these will go? No, not yet. But we do know that we have a lot of potential space and that we are going to pursue a study that will tell us exactly where the best space is, not only a possible space. We know that we have possible spaces. We just need to determine what the best, most cost-effective, most effective space is. So, I think we need to be careful with our language here, right? We do know as well as we can know what these will cost. We do know as well as we can know where they will go. We need to proceed based on that information. So, I'm in support of this motion.
I'm going to...
We have options.
Do you have final comments on the motion?
Just to piggyback off of what Ms. Lipsel said, I get that we, we're not 100% sure of the price, but typically, when something of this magnitude, you have at least a plan or schematic of like, location and what it's going to look like, and we don't have that. Again, if we're going to be asking someone for a substantial amount of money, I feel like we should give them that along with, this is what we want. This is, these are the plans. To just tell them how much or possible how much?
We have plans.
So, we have location?
We have a full set of plans as the building is constructed, as it sits. And that's what we would be using.
Location as well?
We do not have a location. As we said, we would be doing a study to find out what the best location is, but you could make a case that you could put them here at the Joyce, you could put them at the Alta Vesta, you could put them at the Shamrock, you could put them at the Ridge, you could put them at the Kennedy. So, that's why we would bring a consultant in to give us the absolute best location, taking in all factors.
So, I'm just curious, maybe the...
We have to move on the motion.
I understand that, but...
That's okay.
Why haven't this, the study been done prior to this point?
Because it costs money. We don't have funding for it.
Right. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That passes. The ayes have it, six to one. So, to be clear...
On the motion, what are you going to present to the city council?
Did you, Mr. Austin?
No, I didn't say aye or no.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was, ayes have it, five to two. Thank you. Please correct the minutes. I will go down to the, now that I've been authorized to advocate for the modular classrooms, I will go down to the city council and/or the mayor's office and tell them that we believe that the modulators are educationally necessary and see if we can secure funding for them based on this vote tonight. That's what you authorized me to do. Just a quick timeline. I understand that the parent council meeting is meeting on March 4th.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Lenny.
Good night, Lenny.
He was, looks like he was being held hostage. So, the next parent meeting is March 4th and then our meeting is March 5th. When we, we're going to have a discussion about guiding principles. They're very important because when we solidify those guiding principles, that's what's going to draw the maps on 3/4. And that's what's going to feed our school committee meeting on 3/5. So, that's why it's important to move into the next agenda item, which is refining of guiding principles for redistricting.
I don't, who's driving the ship?
That rock.
Jean, can you grab the cord, please?
Thank you, Jean. Do we need a, do we need a slight recess?
We could love a recess.
Okay, let's take a three-minute recess.
Sure. I got it.
The boys won.
Do you have to vote on that? Do we have to vote on that or we just make that, should I just make it so?
I can pop it.
Except the motion to go into recess. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're at recess. I apologize. All right.
All is good in this one.
Yeah, because I'm like, wait, so do I have to do it? I'm not doing that.
All right.
We're back. I'll accept a motion to go back into public session.
Second?
All in favor? Okay, we're back. At it. And now, we're going to revise and refine and prioritize and really make an excellent work product here on our guiding principles. I just want to, I would be remiss if I just didn't add that a great number of emails that we've received just on behalf of the school committee have been directed from the Shamrock community regarding the equity in terms of social, economic learners. So, I just want to state that off the bat because we received all the emails and I'll be naming them, of course, in correspondence, but I just wanted to make, you know, I know the committee's aware of that, but just keep that in mind as we receive those emails. Go ahead, Dr. Crowley. Thank you.
So, I'm going to quickly turn this back over to, or not back, but turn this to Ms. Wetzel. This is the, proposed guiding principles was taken from the guiding principles that were drafted last year. And last week at a resource subcommittee meeting, Ms. Wetzel, who's the chair of this subcommittee, took it upon herself with the committee to run through the guiding principles from last year and kind of put these in front of the entire committee for deliberation tonight. Again, what you've heard is that the maps that will be drawn are drawn based on your priorities here, and so it's very important to, you know, debate, deliberate, whatever the case may be, priorities. And I think we said it earlier, not, everything's important, but some things are more important than others. And so, with that being said, Ms. Wetzel, I don't know if you want to add context or walk through how you got here, but...
Yeah, I'm happy to. I'm actually going to read a little bit from my notes from our last resource meeting on February 20th. So, for everybody, what are guiding principles? This was taken from a document Sandborn provided. So, guiding principles identify the purpose and/or need for redistricting. For successful outcome scenarios need to be evaluated against the school district's guiding principles. The guiding principles need to be developed, keeping in mind that we will, that they will be used for evaluating scenarios. The list should highlight what is important to the community. How will Wuburn use our guiding principles? The final prioritized list of guiding principles will be used by Sandborn when creating maps to review. The school committee will use the guiding principles to evaluate maps based on the priorities identified in our principles. It is normal for principals to contradict one another. And how we created our guiding principles. So, as Dr. Crowley mentioned, we looked at the principles we had last year. We also looked at community feedback that was provided from the community feedback summary. We talked about it in our subcommittee and we've talked about them here in this committee as well, and we've described them as a working document, something that we looked at, we're going to look at again. We actually meet again as resources tomorrow and they're on our agenda for tomorrow as well. Because again, it's been stated that these are a crucial next step in the redistricting process as maps can't be drawn until we have these finalized. So, just to look at what we came up with in resources, February 20th, last Thursday, and these are in no specific order. We really just need to sit here as a committee and prioritize these, or maybe there's something the committee thinks shouldn't be on this list or something that we're missing. We're just going to look at page one, page two, and three of the document that I sent out to everyone that's also attached in the school committee notice and agenda, has two additional pages, and those pages were from last year. So, I'll just read through these and again, keeping in mind that they do need to be prioritized because again, that's how maps will be looked at and that's how we will look at maps once we have them. So, placing the early childhood program in one building, for example, modulators, key piece. Pursue class size equity in all schools. Proximity of students to their school, neighborhood schools. Equitable in terms of demographics. Ms. Crowley, or Chair Crowley mentioned this, something we've heard loud and proud from the Shamrock families. Long-term solution. So, are we, we want a long-term solution for this. We don't, as Ms. Young mentioned, want to redistrict kids, redistrict kids another year. So, with that, we want to make sure we have flex space inside of our buildings so we don't have to do that. And ensure that each school has a dedicated specialist room, meeting spaces for confidential rooms such as IEP meetings, staff spaces, sensory rooms, calm spaces, libraries, cafeterias, things that you would find inside of our buildings, something that we need to keep in mind as we're looking at space solutions. Maintain sub-separate programs in current buildings. We thought that was important because those are our most vulnerable populations and to move them around can be very challenging for families and for staff and for the buildings that they go to. And then provide as little disruption to students as possible by meeting the needs of the district and the city. So, that's kind of what we've condensed from last year as well as looking at some community feedback as well and things that we've heard from parent emails. It's kind of how we got this list that isn't prioritized yet, but needs to be done so by the committee and really just talked about because it's something we need.
Ms. Cormier, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just, you know, that these were a great for a starting point. We had made them for our own use, not for the consultant's use. And so, now we are change, updating and consolidating. You know, we can personally still use what we had before for our own thoughts, but, you know, this, as Dr. Crowley had said, needs to be more concise for the consultants. And for me, the first option was really a yes or no. So, for the starting point, number one, grabbing modulators, putting the early childhood program in there. Can we do that? Can we not do that? Then moving forward into the priorities. And that was reinforced today by Mr. Burnham's presentation that for me to do that, modulators are the only option, price-wise. So, once that question is answered and then we move into that. So, and those were, the first three after that were the feedback that we got from the community, the class sizes, proximity slash neighborhood schools, and then equitable demographics. So, I thought those were important to prioritize at this time.
Great. I just, I want to ask the administration just for my own, to run this sort of discussion. How many should we have?
No more than five.
Got it. Okay. So, here we have a good starting point if we want to try to whittle, whittle, whittle down to five. Mr. Lipsel?
So, I, this is sort of piggybacks on what Ms. Cormier just said. I think there are two things here that don't really fit with the overall, my overall understanding what a guiding principle is. The first is the early childhood program, right? That's something that, is simply something we need to answer. What follows from that answer, as Ms. Cormier said, that's our guiding principles, right? So, whether we determine, I think, you know, what this may wind up looking like is we will need to request two sets of maps that follow the guiding principles, one with an ECP in a separate building, one without, right? The other one that to me, I just, it doesn't feel like it fits to me is the question of a long-term solution. That's to me a given. I don't think that we are going to choose an option that we are going to need to revisit in two or three years, right? If we're forced into that, then we can have that discussion. But to me, that isn't, that isn't a value that we have. That's, that's a basic understanding. We don't want to do a redistrict where we are going to have to revisit it in two or three years, right? So, what's, I mean, and please, administration, correct me if this seems incorrect here, but that seems to me to be something that we can just sort of take a priori and not have as part of our guiding principles, but take as a basic.
I can repeat what I said at the subcommittee that's helpful on this. So, I think that the long-term solution one that we've, that we have talked about is, is that the modular option is the one that guarantees the long-term solution. I think that when we answer the first bullet question of place the early child program in one building, really the question there is where do you want us to place the early childhood program? Whether it's maintaining exactly where it is now or whether you want it to go to another place is actually the question in terms of the two maps drawn, right? So, there's the modular draw and then, to your point, like, it's that that's a long-term solution. Any solution in which we're then building out with modulators in our existing buildings, wherever it is that we are directed to place them, I don't think that we could comfortably say is a long-term solution because I don't think, because I think that it is more unpredictable. And I think that it could be, but I also think that it may not be because I think that we know that with it existing in our current building... that we know that with it existing in our current buildings as is, is part of our current space problem. And now granted, the next answer to that could be a new building, but again, I think that, you know, do we redistrict and now within our existing buildings? And that lasts us until a new building is built? It could, but I don't think that we could say that it does, right? And so I think that that is like the unknown, and I think no one wants to build maps that don't go long-term, but what we talked about is, is that that is less of a guarantee. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah. So I think perhaps it makes sense then to remove those two from the guiding principles and simply accept that any maps that place the early childhood center into one building, whether that be modulators, or if we are forced in another direction on that, another direction on that, or we proceed with something that may not be a long-term solution, right? And then we have guiding principles.
Or more unpredictable.
Or more unpredictable, right? Then we proceed with the remaining guiding principles after that. So I guess, I guess I would start here with a motion to do exactly that, to remove those two items from our guiding principles and to accept them as sort of two paths forward for the guiding principles that we will remain with.
Second.
Or Dr. Crowley, if you would.
So I guess I'm wondering if the impact, if you remove the early childhood as a principle, does it impact the other principles?
I think it's more of, like, my understanding of it is more of a question. I think that what it, what it sounds like, and again, I don't, I'm, we will do whatever is the will of how the committee wants us to look at this. But there's, what, right now, based off of how we are now, and my understanding of the vote that was made was that we're looking at maps with modulators, right? That then if there is a, and what would potentially a phased approach look like? The second piece of this is that then we're building maps in which there are not modulators. The first, it's really, it's a question of where, where is the ECP for all, for those maps that we are drawing? And so I guess to your point of, it's, it is the first thing, because we can't move forward, draw, with the maps to be drawn, without knowing the answer to that question, and then you're going down the line.
Okay.
Yeah.
So on the motion, I guess then the question becomes...
Was it seconded?
It was.
Yes, I did. Perfect. Great.
Sorry.
Of course, go ahead.
The question then becomes, would the answer to that question change what follows after, right? So do our guiding principles change if we are looking at, at an ECP that is still split between buildings and therefore a more unstable solution, right? As opposed to an ECP that is in one building that provides us with a little bit more stability longer term? For me, I don't know that my answer to that is yes. I think that our, is no. I don't know. Whichever one says, we would have the same guiding principles either way. I don't anticipate that we would have to change our priorities determining, based on, based on that, when we look at the other options available. I don't think that that would change our commitment to class size equity, or our commitment to demographic equity, or any of the above. I mean, that's, that's just my view, but I'm throwing that out there.
I think what Abbott is trying to say is, if we don't have the modulators, dude, does the committee still want early childhood program in one building? Because that is going to be arduous. That's going to look very different than what we have now. Go ahead, Ms. Cormier.
On the motion, that was why I put modulators in for the season.
Yeah, I know.
Just to be clear to everyone, because that, what my thoughts are, is from what I'm hearing, refitting, refurbishing a building doesn't seem like an option, and nor does it sticking it all in the Reeves. You know, so I think that what would happen is they'd just kind of make, do as best they could. So that was, that was my thought on it. So it's either modulators, and then you make maps, or do your best and trickle down from there.
So...
Yeah. Does that...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead, please.
Lenny put the, or Mr. Burnham, sorry, put the price up for the, just two of the buildings.
Yes.
And they pulled that from the feasibility study. Because that, that had been publicly talked about prior, and so I just want to say that. There is not a building that's like ready to open as an ECP. We know that. So there would be an expense attached to it, but I'm just, I'm just sharing.
It just seems like the modulators are the cheapest option of all those things, and that's why I don't even think if we, if we are not, if we're not giving the money for the modulators, I don't see us getting the millions of dollars for any kind of refurbishment. So that was what my, my thought was. On question one, yes or no, and then following your algorithm down from there. And I, and I do think that they would remain the same for me, class size proximity, and then equity of demographics. And, side note, I did forget to mention earlier, I don't want to disrupt students. I would like to disrupt them as little as possible, too. But this is also considering that these changes are not just for the current students that are in the building. These are long-term changes, and so while it may disrupt a student one or two years, three years in their, yeah, career, elementary career, it is going to benefit them ideally because we're going to be adjusting the classes and the changes that we want to make, and it's also going to be a longer standing, you know, for the future kids. So I think that that, that disruption weighed against the benefits are important to me, and it's hard to really, how do you quantify disruption? I think that was a question last year, too. So those are my thoughts on the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cormier. I just want to be clear what we're, what we're doing here. So you made a motion to take out, place early childhood program in one building off the guiding principles, as well as long-term solution.
Yes, assuming that those are effectively part of the same
Yes.
binary choice that we have to make here, or will have to make.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mulrennan, did you want to?
No, I agree.
Great. Okay. Ms. Chisholm?
Someone commented, Ms. Cormier.
Vice Chair Chisholm?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that my thoughts are, I do not want to repurpose any elementary school. I think that we're in a crunch for space, and taking a school off, and taking it away from a neighborhood is not anything I would ever support.
Okay. Can I, okay. Can you hold on that thought for a minute, Ms. Chisholm? Because thank you for mentioning that.
You know I will hold forever on that. Just keep tapping me on the head, because it's going to skip.
Ms. Wetzel, did you have a commentary?
Kind of. I think by, well, I'm just wondering, by taking the early childhood program off, because I agree, it is a yes or no, it does drastically change what the consultant would be doing. And how then are we, if we don't have modulators, able to have the, like, how does that work in terms of meeting our guiding principles on this list? I think is something we need to think about, because if we don't have these additional rooms, class size equity, that kind of thing does become an issue, as it already is.
I, I think that what I would, again, I venture to guess, is that your guiding principles are going to probably have to look different depending on the two options.
Correct.
Because I think that what you, what you're going to, how you're going to do, what you're going to get out of a modular-based map draw versus the, the keeping everything in our buildings, I think that you're going, what you're going to be looking at is going to look probably pretty different. I think that for me, and I think what struck Ms. Crowley when you spoke is, is that I think even as simple of the idea that like ECP will just go wherever there is open, that, like, that isn't necessarily what I would have thought you wanted me, you wanted us to give to the consultant of how you, what you up for ECP, right? And I think it's what, and to the, kind of the idea of like taking a school off, I mean, we seemingly have been slowly taking the Reeves off of offline, and I'm just saying that for like the context of the Reeves School, that they are. They're a building that has typically had a lot more general education classrooms, and by keeping it there, we are making it a smaller elementary school than it was intended to be. That's fine, if that's the continued plan, but I just think it's important to recognize that that is happening, irregardless of any decision that keeps the ECP in any of the elementary schools, right? And so when you're drawing a map, for example, if we're going to keep the ECP as is, and we go to look at map draws, you're going to have to draw the Reeves smaller, because right now you can't draw a building and guess and like hope for 14. You'll end up with 14 when you draw for 12 and you place all the students, because then you get the bubble rooms, right? And so I just, I say that just as in context, that I think that you might want to think about them as two separate things.
Yes.
And if this is what makes sense for modulators, but I think that you need to walk through what's actually happening when we're keeping it in the buildings and what we're actually drawing, because I think you are making two very different maps and two very different decisions. And I think for, for us, I mean, even just as simple of where should we start with where the ECP classrooms are, is going to change, or if it is, that they should just get placed in the after part, that's two very different ways in which we're going to direct the consultant to draw maps.
So let's make two guiding principle documents, all right? So the easy one is if we get modulators, right? If we have modulators, what are the guiding principles? They look, they could look something like this. I also think someone might make a motion that we could actually reduce class sizes. Just saying, it might not be about equity. We could actually make a, you could, the committee could decide something like that.
Well, we still have a big motion there for us tonight, the first one.
Andrew, would you withdraw the motion so we can start again?
I will happily withdraw.
Okay. So we're going to make two guiding principles. One, we get the mods. Two, we don't. The easy one is, is we, we get, we get it, we get the mods, right? So what are the guiding principles? Because we, now we're living in a world where we have this additional space to work with. So what would be, what would be the committee's wishes and best, you know, thoughts for the redistricting process if we have the modulators? Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Andrew.
I'm going to call everybody by their first names, I'm tired. Go ahead.
That's fine. I think, you know, to Ms. Cormier's point earlier, it's just the bottom one there, provide a little disruption to students as possible while meeting the needs of the district and the city. That is such a broad principle. I feel as though it's kind of like, okay, we don't want to disrupt you guys, but for the benefit of the city, we're going to disrupt you in the benefit of the district. We don't want to disrupt you, but it benefits others, so you're going to get disrupted. I just need a little clarification on that one. If anybody has anything else to provide, you know, what, what that might mean.
Okay. So what would be number one for members? Like, what is the one big, huge principle for when we have modulators? Is it to place the early childhood program in all in one space? Sounds like that might be number, number one.
If there's modulators.
If there's modulators, yes.
Yes, everyone, I hope so.
If we get modulators, please put the ECP in them.
Yeah.
Yes. We're going to continue to split them up even when we have, no.
So am I going to just ask a clarifying question?
Yes, please.
So I have, so what I'm, what I'm doing here, I have two, I've just duplicated our guiding principles.
Amazing.
I have one with an N for we have modulators. I have one with an N for we have no modulators.
Amazing.
So what I'm going to do unless somebody stops me, is I'm going to take the first bullet point off of both of them, because now we're assuming that the first one has modulators and the second one doesn't.
Correct.
Okay? So I think that we don't necessarily need to, this is just my view, we don't necessarily need to debate that because we've determined that we're looking at both.
Yes.
Okay.
So with that said, Mr. Andrew, I guess provide a little disruption.
School committee after dark. Here we are.
Okay. And then, and then Mike wanted to know what this disruption, what it means.
Oh, just put, put it for number one, and we'll take it from there.
No. No. Let's discuss it.
Okay, discuss it.
Could I, could I answer that?
We have clarification.
Of course you can. Everyone can just like speak.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, yeah. Assistant Superintendent Ryan, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mulrennan, this speaks a little bit to when we talk about clean lines. So if you were to take a blank slate, and you were to look at the geography of the schools and draw perfectly clean lines, you might actually be disrupting a lot, moving a lot more students than what we would currently need to do to have the students with equal numbers, right? The way that the current students attend school, you've got like, for example, there's some AltaVesta, Linsgate families that, you know, there's little
A little water.
Jut out, and so do you need to move those students? No, you might still have 100 and 100, but you don't necessarily have clean lines, right? So you might have a student traveling a little bit farther, so the question is, do you want to disrupt them so that you have cleaner lines, or would you rather have the least disruption and leave kids where they are?
But I think that to the point of the cleaner lines, the way I think about it is, is that, and this is where the point of them contradicting each other and prioritizing each other is important. So providing these disruptions, and this is a little bit, Andrew, your question of keeping it on there, providing the least disruptions may not make a longer-term solution, right? Moving more students might make a longer-term solution. So which one is more important? Moving less students, or having lines that last longer? And that's, I guess, is the point of you needing to prioritize, is that those draw drastically different maps.
May I jump in?
Great.
Of course you can, Ms. Cormier. So for me also, like I said, you know, students are being disrupted right now, so we are, we could be in some ways minimizing disruption by moving students. To bring back specialty, specialist rooms, changing those class sizes to make them smaller, that is going to move some, and I think Ms. Crowley mentioned last year, you know, if one student is moved from this class, does that disrupt the rest of the students because their little friend has been moved? You know, I mean, that's the thing with disruption. What do you, what do you call disruption? Do you want to move as little children as possible? I think that's a separate thought. And again, I think that is something that we would then internalize, and we would think about once we get the maps. I don't think that's a guiding principle for the consultant, is the disruption question.
But I, but disruption, in my understanding of how you have it as a guiding principle, is the number of students we're moving.
Students.
And so that is, in fact, a decision of, do you want us to move more kids, or, and, like, is it more important to have a longer-term solution, to have class sizes more equitable, or to move the least number of students? Because all of those things will determine which map is drawn first. Those would draw different maps. Yeah.
I think that it's important to also clarify what we mean by, you know, when we talk about disruption, you know, I hate to bring anyone's memory back to last year. I especially hate that. But, you know, at the end, we had talked about option one and option one B, right? And option one B, I know, I know. Just saying the words, that means chills. But, option one B restored the Shamrock District to its original lines, and to do so, we had to balance it off by carving off a fairly narrow portion of a neighborhood from Malcolm White and bringing that to the Good Year, right? That disrupted a fairly small number of students, but it divided a neighborhood, it took students, a fair, a very small number of students, out of their school into a school where they would now know nobody, rather than a school where they would know potentially a large number of people who are coming over from a, from a previous elementary school. So disrupting the fewest number of students isn't necessarily less disruptive to the lives of students, right? If you're moving a larger chunk from an elementary school, what you're doing is keeping students in a neighborhood together, you're keeping students who have been classmates together, as opposed to peeling off one student or two students from a classroom and showing, and putting them into a new school where they don't necessarily know other students. So I, I hear the desire to provide as little disruption. I think we need to be careful as to what we think disruption means. It doesn't necessarily mean moving the smallest number of students. That can be damaging in and of itself.
If that's a priority, we should word that that way then, yeah.
And that's the clarification, because then again, the needs of the district and the city. You know, the clarification's not really provided in that statement, but...
Well, everything above it will be, because that's what we'll get to. That'll be the needs, to be able to provide for equity, to provide for smaller class sizes if possible, to provide the neighborhoods to stay together, so.
Okay, so going back to one, to modulators. Modulators. Can you go back, because you're on N?
Oh.
Okay. So this is the easy one. Again, if we have the space, and basically we have another, it will be another school building in some ways, what, what is the most important thing for the committee? Is it to pursue class size equity in all schools? Is that, is, is that something that we can all agree is, is number one?
I am on board with that.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Well, but the only thing with that is you can have the same class sizes, but you Well, but the only thing with that is you can have the same class sizes, but you might have a school that does not have an art room and a music room and enough conference rooms.
Well, this is modulars.
Right, but.
Yep.
But just that, that would be a higher thing for me than it would be for.
Okay.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Could I ask?
If we're going to label three or four.
Could I ask the committee to also please think a little bit about the substantially separate programs in the buildings? Because I think the special education students, moving them is incredibly challenging. They, many don't transition well, they get accustomed to the community that they're in, to the peers that they're with, and I just, I would ask you to really think about that, that group of learners.
And a reminder, SOAR moved last year. And Halls is at the Reeves, those that, you know, and then we have RISE.
So, can I ask, Ms. Ryan, if we do, if we are able to obtain modulars or, or space for these, dedicate it to ECP? To what degree does that lessen any potential that we would need to move sub-separate programs? Essentially what I'm asking is, does that take enough pressure off of the system right now that we can say, yeah, the, the sub-separate programs are very likely to be able to stay where they, where we are, and we can put that first and say, build around this and then we can go from there?
So, I, I think we would have to look at what that did for, again, you'd have to look at the maps, because if modulars came into place, you were going to open up nine rooms at the Reeves and you're going to open up four at the Shamrock. And so, it, it does, you know, we have to draw the picture and see.
Okay.
I mean, it certainly gives us a little bit more flexibility because you're adding space.
Right.
If, if the modulars actually come into play, you, you have more, you have better choices in that, in that sense.
But class size, I mean, to be number one, it seems like that's one of the driving forces as to why we're here, at least, you know, community-wise. So, that, that could be number one, I'm just putting it out there. And then, number two could be substantially separate programs in current buildings. That could be number two. But again, I'm just running the meeting.
I was going to suggest putting it number one, just because it's a given, I guess.
Okay. What does everyone feel about putting substantial, maintaining substantially separate programs in current buildings as they are now as a priority? RISE, Halls, GAIN, GAIN, Assessment Center, right?
My, my only concern with that comes back a little bit to what Ms. Ryan just said, which is, are we locking ourselves into something that is going to cause us significant problems as we, as we redo other maps? Do we want to, I mean, I don't want to move sub-separate programs. We have moved sub-separate programs enough. At the same time, if we can provide a long-term solution for our system that meets a lot of the things on this list while moving one sub-separate program into a space potentially that's better for them, then I don't know that we can, we can take that off the list off the bat. I, I think what we need to think about is not just what we value, but also what is going to provide the consultant with the most ability to deliver us a usable, or a flexible system that is going to last us a long time. So, I think while, I, I don't think putting anything lower on this list means that we don't value it, and I want to, like, I, I want to say that clearly, because we are going to wind up with one of these things last on the list. That doesn't mean that we don't value it, but it means that potentially we want to prioritize other things and see even the value in, in having other things lower on because they will allow us to do more.
And there might be a map where the first, the first bullet that you want also achieves the last bullet. It's not to say that you go down the line, you don't get those things. It's, what is the thing that we are starting as the starting point to draw the lines?
So, because this has to happen, I will make a motion that we put class size equity in all schools first on this list.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion on the matter? Any discussion? I was like, oh, wow, so good a motion. I'll just sit here. Any discussion on the motion?
You know, I turn into a witch very shortly.
All in favor?
On the motion?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Ms. Malrennen, of course.
This is with portable, I understand, right?
Yes. Yes. All in favor? All right. That is number one, is pursue class size equity.
May I make a motion that we remove, provide as little disruption to students as possible? In that, you know, if we do put modulars in, there's going to be, like Ms. Ryan said, nine open classrooms. That's a lot of kids that are going to move. Nobody is moving kids just to move them for giggles. So, I think that that is sort of redundant, I guess.
Thank you. We want to whittle the list down, so I appreciate that.
I would like to make that motion.
I would say.
Is there any discussion on that motion?
Can I clarify that again?
No, of course, of course.
So, for instance.
This is with modules.
Yes.
Keep that in mind, because we got modules.
Well, that's what I said. So, yes. In that instance, that's nine classrooms out of the Reeves and four classrooms out of the Shamrock, and you would presumably be filling that space. That would be moving a number of children. That is potentially disrupting those children, right? So, my point is.
Those children alone. What about the rest of the district?
Well, what I'm saying, well, that's the problem.
That's the problem.
Well, if I can finish my sentence, I would love to get there for you, sir. So, you are emptying nine classrooms, you're moving children into that, kids are getting adjusted, and again, no one is just moving them just to move them. I, I love your idea of clean lines, you know this, but I don't want to move kids just to make lovely clean lines, as much as I would love to color code it appropriately. So, I would like to remove that last bullet because I think that the moving, nobody's just going to move them just to move them. It's, it's, there is going to be disruption, but they're going to have to move to fill in those gaps to, again, make the, number one, pursue class size equity to equally distribute the children. Does that make more sense? And the reason, and then, I would like to consider whether or not there is a lot of disruption in my determining of which map I choose. So, I can still think that way, but I don't need the.
Consultant to work out of that.
Right? That's how I feel. That's my thought on the pro, the situation.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion, Ms. Wetzel?
I just had a question for Iman on the motion. Educationally, does that make sense as we're having the consultant look at these lines to remove that from just a strictly academic standard?
The least number, the least disruption?
Yeah, correct.
I think that, I think it depends on how we're defining disruption. I guess in my mind, the way that it was written was student movement.
Number of students.
Number of students moved.
Yep.
And I do think it's important to know where that is in terms of the committee's thoughts on, on drawing, because again, I think the North Hoover was a, was a good example of that space, of, you know, whether we were to the Merrimack and schools, that whole area, whether you wanted to, to make the shift of that, that, those students depends on how far up disruption, I guess, number of students moved is. You're going to get, you're going to get two different maps. When we're, when you're going through and they're moving components, depending on, on where that is in terms of the decision.
So, for ambiguity, I would like to remove that. Someone may suggest that we put, move as little children as possible?
Yeah, I'm wondering if it makes more sense to be really clear, just in terms of student movement.
Yeah.
As, as just a bullet in terms of number of students moved, where, where that is. It could be whether it's, I'm trying, I guess I'm reflecting, Andrew, on, on what your, your piece of it was, and how, if that could be reflected in the bullet as well. But I do think that I'm, like, under, that student movement is a, is a component that is helpful to give the consultant when helping them determine to draw lines.
So, if I could follow up, I, I think that.
You mean, at this point of the evening, I'm asking you incredibly clear?
No, I didn't. I'm only going to get worse. The, the, Colleen, I'm, I'm following you, because I, for what it's worth, I think that the modulars are the most disruptive, to be honest. So, I just want to be perfectly clear. So, the module, like, I think it's the best thing, because it gives you the cleanest opportunity to redistrict appropriately, but I think that the most, it's the most disruptive, because you're doing it for, with the idea that this will hold for 10 years.
And again, that's disrupting currents, and I don't want to disrupt current students, I don't want that for anybody, but we are short-term disrupting current students for the long-term gain, for the future students that will have a library and have idealism.
Right. So, I guess, I just wanted to say that, because I, I don't want the modulars to, to appear like, that it's not a disruption.
Certainly.
Because it absolutely is. Where it ranks is, that's the question, right? So.
Okay. All right. We want to change, little, provide little disruption.
May I speak?
Of course you can, Mr. Austin.
Thank you. With the updated city lines, which we didn't have last time, last time, that's going to cause disruption, because now kids are going to be placed, I guess, schools is closer to their homes. So, even when we're trying to have little disruption, it's still going to be that disruption of kids going to proper schools, as in schools that are closest to their homes, I guess, with the updated city lines. So, that's something to consider as well. There'll still be disruption with that piece.
So, it sounds like the committee is thinking in terms of saying little disruption, which is a vague term, and also I don't really like it while meeting the needs of the district and the city, like, that's weird. We should say something like move as few children as possible, right? That sounds like something.
So, you want to put that on my motion? Do you want to add, addend?
I think you should just withdraw your motion, then make that motion.
Well, okay, then, I will do that.
Yeah. Does that, because that's what we, that's what the consultant wants to know.
How about I make an emotion that we change the wording to say, move as few students as possible, period, leave off the obvious, so that stuff. Sure. Okay. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor? All right. Now, we're dealing with the, the, where we want to place the principle.
Yeah, I think we need to amend that. I think, I think that this is not just move as few students, like.
Right.
We don't want to redistrict and move one kid.
So, what I'll do is, I will move that. Why don't you just clarify what the principle is? I don't want it there personally, but I'm just trying to.
No, I know, but I think what I, what I want to, what I want to add to it is.
Sure.
While not, I, I'm trying to word this correctly, but move as many students as possible without breaking up neighborhoods, for example.
But is that in number two? Does that, does that cover it?
I don't want to be idiots, right? So, for example, like, look, I don't, my neighborhood isn't anywhere near where my kids go to school.
Right, right.
We might redistrict that whole area. Fine, right? Doing that doesn't necessarily achieve the proximity of students to their schools and neighborhood schools.
Correct.
So, I think that those are two separate things.
Sure. Yeah.
And I, I suppose it's, it's fine if it's, if it's not the bullet. I mean, we'll, we'll provide the moves. I guess what I just want to say is that I don't think it's only an outcome. I do think it's also a part of like the appetite of the committee in terms of how many students we're moving.
All right, let's go to number two.
No, so.
We have a motion on that.
What are we, what are we doing? You don't like little, as, as few children as possible?
My motion is to change it to say, move as few students as possible, period.
But with the modulars, we'd be moving more.
Right.
Right, and that's why I don't like it.
That's why it could be like on the.
So, I had it to be removed, and then it didn't.
It's at the bottom, leave it there. Well, because we're taking four or five, right?
But if you're saying move as little as possible, going back to kids, proximity of students to their schools and neighborhoods, we don't know how many kids that might be. So, if we're saying little as possible, then, like Andrew said, well, if there is a, a cluster of kids, then we should, we already move as little as possible of those kids?
I'm changing the wording to make it clearer for a future vote, to then just remove it. Because I tried to remove it and I, it didn't work.
Right, that's what she was trying to do.
I'm trying to clear up the language and then it'll probably get removed anyway, but I don't know how else to move this night forward.
I like the idea, let's do it.
Okay. So, if anybody else wants to make a motion, I will redact mine and we can move on, but I just wanted to make some progress.
So, if I could, Ms. Chair, Madam Chair, Dr. Crowley, you said five would be a good starting point, could they accept a little bit more, maybe?
Yeah, I was just saying, I think it really matters as long as the top of your order is nine.
It's ranked. We took these and put what we have.
Well, accept it as it is.
Just rank them. There it is. Rank what we have in front of us.
Do you just want to take this and rank them? Is everyone okay if we just?
You don't want to stay until 12.
Leave it ranked as it is.
All right, great.
There we go. That's my motion.
We're ranking them.
There we go.
With portables, with modulars?
With modulars, like that.
With all.
Okay. So, we're just.
Calling it one.
Hold on. I feel like we do need kind of a motion to do this, right?
So.
Okay.
Well, we, what didn't, long-term solutions, wasn't that factored into modulars? So, should we just remove that one? Because that was.
Yes.
Right? So, I will make a motion to remove long-term solution and all that. Yeah.
Second.
That encompasses, all right?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Bye. There we go.
All right, there you go.
And now we, so now we're left with this.
I need to, can I just appoint?
Of course, yes.
I, I understand it's late.
No, it's, it's okay.
Public's eyes are on us. I want everyone to be sure that we are not rushing any of this.
Right.
Because it is late. So, I think it is important that we maintain having motions, having seconds, following some semblance of order here. Just because we have, we have a city's eyes on us, and I don't want this to look like we are just tossing things out there and coming up with lists and moving on. I think we do need a little bit.
This is the list that we've had since last year.
I know it is, but we are now ranking it.
Thank you, Ms. Levitz.
We need to, we need to follow the procedure.
So, I just want to know this. This is our guiding principles for the event that we get modulars. And so, if everyone can direct their comments as to whether or not they agree with this list being in order to submit to the consultant, that would be great. Ms. Wetzel, then, Ms. Malrennen.
I think we should look at the demographics. I personally think they should go number two. I love, I can walk to school, it's super important, it's part of my lifestyle. I think it's fantastic, but I also think demographics inside of a building are very important. So, for me personally, I would rank them higher than walkability. Just a thought and hoping to discussion.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, you know, I'm going to make a motion, yes.
Great. Flip three and two?
To flip three and two.
Okay.
Second. On the motion.
Of course, Ms. Correa.
I like where your head's at. How do you define demographics?
Good question. So, I.
I was going to say, the subgroups that get measured for us are special education, multilingual learners and low income. And so, those are the, those are the three buckets that are provided for the maps.
One thing I might-
Thank you.
Yeah, of course, Ms. Lipsit.
One thing I might caution there is, to what degree do we want to include special education, given the presence of sub-separate programs that may throw off that balance?
We still look at the percentage.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, I, I would say to, to Ms. Wetzel's point, like, the, the difference of those two was important because it, that would draw, that would draw two very different, not, that would make a difference in terms of where you put certain clusters.
So, Ms. Correa? Still in motion. I, um, have heard the feedback specifically from the Shamrock parents, understanding the geography of Woburn. Um, my only sort of pause there is looking at the demographics and saying, well, because your family makes less money, you're going to go farther away to a school, or because you are this race, you're going to go over. It just feels weird to me. I just want to make that comment. I continue to second your motion.
Okay.
Discuss further.
The motion is to flip two to three, or three to two? What is it?
Yep.
Three to two.
Slash three to two.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Okay.
Andrew, flip them. I'm watching real time.
And number them.
Okay, so we have pursue-
We're building planes, we're flying it, Dr. Crowley.
Pursue class size equity in all schools is number one. Two is equitable in terms of demographics, defining them as, um, EL status, special ed, low income. Proximity of students to their schools and neighborhood is number three. Maintain sub-separate programs in current buildings is number four.
I flip three as well.
And provide as little disruption to students as possible while meeting the needs of the district or the city. Does anyone want to change that language, by the way?
Yes, I want to flip three and four.
I did. Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. Okay, and Ms. Chisholm is making a vote to flip three and four. Do I have a second?
Second.
It was a motion and then no, we can vote.
Any discussion on that?
Do any discussion? Any discussion on, um, and the specific thing is, um, putting, maintain sub-separate programs ahead, um, of proximity of students to their school and neighborhood schools. Any discussion on that?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. That passes. I mean, excellent, like, we voted.
I have a question.
Of course, Mr. Austin.
This might throw a monkey wrench in everything.
That's okay.
So with the amount of money that we're paying, they're asking us to prioritize our guiding principles. Is that because they're looking to give us maybe three scenarios? Because what I'm thinking is, why can't they give us scenarios with each and different levels, as if, in other words, and I'm tired. Right now, we have pursuing class size equity in all schools. Why can't they give us a map based off of that? Also a map based off of them being changed? Also a map, if you, if, I know it might be too much, but I'm just thinking, like, if, if we're giving them that much money, they should be able to do more work for us and just give us some more ideas and let us see more.
So I would say that the best answer to that is, the, the goal is to do all five, right? Like, I think the goal is to do a map that does all five of these things well, right? And it's not a matter that you're, we're going to do one where it's only going to be a map that does class size equity, however, if then it's not, the demographics aren't equitable at all. What it's really about is thinking about that you have to, when you're drawing the map, start somewhere. And so kind of on each of those, when you start, it kind of makes it look a little bit different. With that said, when you draw a one's kind of, I never remember which one's scenario and options, but you're going to land on what scenario-
Options is a big one.
Options is the big one, the scenarios are underneath it.
Yes.
Okay. So you're going to get an option, and that, and you're going to say as a group, like, we like this one the best. And then they're going to say, okay, now here are four different variations of that option underneath it. What they're just trying to help us do is, and I think it seems like at first, like, just show me all of the maps. But then what happens is, is you're just kind of, till a little bit, you're moving, you're moving everyone around and almost making it more difficult because then it's like, well, in this map, I move here, in this map, I move here. And so it's really just to, like, give everyone a starting point, but to the point of, like, the number of maps you look at, it could still be a large number. This doesn't kind of preclude from that. It just kind of helps start the group. But also, I think a big, bigger part of this genuinely is, is it's understanding what the committee is wanting to do and also not wanting to do. Because it doesn't, we don't want to go, and I think Maureen really said it in the beginning, is go and draw a map that does proximity to neighborhood schools, does a lot of disruption, causes people to be very concerned, and you guys aren't even going to consider it. And so it's just like, now we've made people worried for something that was never going to happen. And I think that's really the bigger part we're looking for. It's like, what is it that we're looking to draw that we know that is what you're hoping to get?
It, it sounds like from what I'm understanding, is that they're going to prioritize everything there.
The goals have all five.
To me, it's almost like, well, why are we prioritizing it? I'm not saying we don't. If, maybe I'm just ready to go home, but I'm just thinking, if they're going to prioritize and give us maps based off of each, for us to label what's important, one, when they're going to give us something, they're going to put two at one.
No, they won't.
No.
No, that's, they'll go-
So they're just going to give us some maps based off of that only?
Yes, so they'll, they'll use number one as, as their starting point, and they'll try to get all five into it. They may get three of the five, but they'll start with class size and equity as their, as their top factors.
And so maybe what I'm asking is, I mean, I know when you have too many options, it gets even more confusing, I guess.
Period of choice.
Yeah, I do, I do know that.
From, from there, you will get different scenarios, though. I think that's the important piece to understand. They're asking you to rank what, what you care about most, and then they're going to give you different scenarios with your priorities in order, but that are slight variations.
I do understand. I guess in my mind, I'm just thinking, if they can give us the scenarios based off of this, why can't give us scenarios if they're adjusted also?
There would be hundreds, yeah, is the issue. It would be very difficult to sort through it, which is why they ask you to start with guiding principles to, to sort of guide where to go. But I do believe you will still have the opportunity to see many different scenarios.
Agreed. Thank you.
Okay. So is everyone, so this is where we are.
Yep.
And, and, Andrew, can you make that number five?
Sure. Is that the, I mean, okay. Just want to make sure that that's what we landed.
And so is everyone satisfied that these are the guiding principles in the event that we get modulars, that this is what we want the consultant to draw maps upon?
Yes.
Mr. Millrennen?
Again, going back to a previous question I asked earlier this evening was, so the advisory committee meets next week, so they have, they're just going to take this. They're not going to have any advice to give us. Is that correct? Is that my understanding?
No, they're going to give this to Sandborn, and then Sandborn will spit out some maps.
So why do we have an advisory committee then?
Yeah, so the work, yeah, the workflow is you create the guiding principles.
Okay.
We'll give them to Sandborn. Sandborn will create maps based on your guiding principles. That, the maps will get fed to the advisory committee to, for feedback.
Okay.
And then their feedback will then inform you about what the community feels relative to the options.
And if, Mr. Millrennen, am I correct in, in saying that your, your question is, is more, you know, to what extent is the community going to have the ability to weigh in on this?
Exactly.
What I would say to that is I completely understand that. I think that the community has been able, over the course of the last couple of years, to weigh in on what the values of this are. We received hundreds of emails last year.
Come in now.
And then, and, and many of those are what this committee used to put forward a lot of those guiding principles last year. We received input from the community survey. That has, uh, that has molded what we're, what we're doing with this. So I think, you know, you can never have too much community input.
Exactly.
But we have had, we have had community input. These are not being written by fiat, is what I would say.
So what you're telling me also is, once these are submitted to Sandborn, they'll come up with a map, a few maps, whatever, that goes to the advisory committee to review and hash around, see what's what with them on, you know, next week's. With mod, with modules and without portables, I guess, is my concern, because, again, I, I said, I said it last year, I'll say it again this year, tomorrow's March, isn't it? When's March?
Saturday.
February 26th, almost February 27th, so, uh, I'm happy, you know, presenting these to Sam, you know, to the consultant as is tonight, and then we're going to go on to the ones without modules, I suppose, and, uh, take it from there. But I have yet to see Sandborn present at any of our meetings yet, or present, that comes later, my understanding now. So the advisory committee will get presentation, the public will still have some input. I mean, why have an advisory committee with nothing to advise us? I want them to have their say, whether via email or via, these public presentations have been presented. I want to make sure that they really happen and that people have really heard as to, well, maybe you shouldn't have had that one. I have, someone may have a better idea, a better fundamental, a better principle that we're not thinking right now, and, you know, have the consultant work off of that. I just want to make sure the public has the presentation and has an opportunity to advise or talk about it, that's all. Thank you.
Great. Um, okay, so now we're moving on to, actually, can you go back to modulars? I just want to pose a question for the committee or the administration. Um, we had briefly talked about the conceptual framework of a two-year redistricting and the events that modulars come online next year. Um, do, do we need to add anything to our guiding principles under modulars in that, in that instance, or is that just something that we will?
They already promised us a D, have you not?
Is that something that we would need to put in these guiding principles, or no?
I don't think you'd need to put in the guiding principles. I think that depending on what map was selected, we can make the phase approach.
Okay.
What I would say is, is that's warranted in terms of what your proposed timeline is.
Right, okay, right. All right, just making sure. Um, okay, moving on to not having modulars. Um, I think this is the discussion of whether, go to N.
Yeah.
There you go.
Of whether or not, where, the ECP, where we put it, this is the big question, right? Not to be crass, like, where are we putting it? But, you know, where is the ECP going to be housed if we don't have modulars? And that is, um, as Dr. Crowley said today, could be, could lead to the repurposing of a elementary school building if we don't have modulars. So that being said, um, let's look at what our guiding principles are in the event that we do not get modulars.
I appreciate what Ms. Ryan and maybe Ms. Young were saying about technically we are repurposing, right, by using the Reeves, um, which was not what I was thinking when I said, what I said previously about it being super expensive, because looking at what they were, Mr. Burnham had put in his Linsket, super expensive, Wyman, super expensive. I appreciate that that is what is happening at that level. Um, so I guess, I guess my point with the no modulars is the decision will, I mean, I don't think we are making the decision of where, like, each ECP classroom would go if, in the event, we needed them.
Right, so if, if we were to put a, a room in tomorrow, the 14th room, which is what I would expect, um, at the Reeves, my understanding from Mr. Commonance is that there is one room there, although not optimal, a room without windows, but there is one spot. Um, if we were to need a, an additional room, that is when you would start to look at specials, um, if you continue to keep them at the Reeves.
And that's this year and next year. And we're talking about redistricting, which in that kind of, within the next five years, we could also be adding more classrooms, is the thought, that the way that the trajectory is going. So even then, uh, you know, that's going to change again, right? Like, that's going to disrupt more.
Thank you, Ms. Correa.
I'm thinking that maybe the committee would like to move long-term solution to kind of near the top on this one, because if we don't have modulars, then we are not building a building for a very long time. So it seems like that would probably be the guiding force of a- Redistricting without- To the best of our ability to.
I'm just, I'm seeing Ms. Young's face, so I kind of want to hear what she has to say.
We know it's difficult.
I, yes, I think, yeah, I think that where, again, what I think for, where I go to, I don't, gosh, not inherently, but for the proposal, for the, um, non-modulars, I think that I just keep going to, that the, on all the other guiding principles, there has to be where, where we are building, where we are planning to put the ECP and whether we are dividing, whether you want, and again, this could be as much of, that you want the options to consider spread across more buildings, whether you want the option to consider having, keeping as many together as possible, whether it's you want us to consider what it could look like if the ECP were in a different building. Again, and I'm just saying on all of these things, what happens when we're going to draw the lines with existing, is we have to really understand kind of, again, I could sit there and decide to draw, you know, put it here, but I don't know what is, I guess, the, what your vision, and I think a little bit is calling, when I, when you were talking earlier, what it made me think about was like, jeez, what you started to say about how you thought where the ECP was going, isn't in my mind what I had thought about where it was going.
I could hear that from you, and I wanted to make sure that we are, yeah.
Yes, and so that's, but I think that's kind of the point, which is like, where, when you're thinking about a non-modular-based option, what are you thinking we are doing when we are drawing the maps with ECP? And what is it that you want it to be, so that we can give you maps that do that? That's, sorry, yeah, my face isn't good at 11.
It's okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I hear, I heard.
Yes, no, and that's where I say, like, the long-term option part, to me, is genuinely based off where do you put, where it's put. I think that, I think that's the, the piece where I go right now, which is that if it is to keep it at the Reeves, and again, I go back to, which is, and I just say that that, for me, is also just, it is making the Reeves a smaller general education building, which is fine if that's where it is, but in terms of, like, ensuring that that is a longer-term solution is probably not something I would say is mutually exclusive. You're, that is, that is not a long-term plan, right? And that's fine, because if that's what makes it more sense, then, then do that, but know that, like, the longer-term solution is probably then the bottom. But if it's a, that you want us to prioritize longer-term solution, then what I would say is, then what is it that, to do that, you want us to investigate on where ECP goes? Does that make sense?
Yep.
I mean, I, I, again, I will just say that taking an elementary school and making it just an ECP now is not something that I think that even the public would support. I think that we just, because we're telling the public we don't have enough rooms for our elementary, but we're going to take an elementary off. And I get that it's because we're doing more ECP, but the Reeves also hasn't had a redistricting problem, so it's maybe shrinking in school, kids, but had, we haven't said, okay, we've taken, you know, 50 kids out of the Reeves, and we've moved them to someplace else because there's no room because we used ECP. So I think we don't have to panic at that point. I know that we're getting there. But I think we've done this whole redistricting because of the elementary school class sizes are crazy. We have a brand-new school, well, it was a most brand-new school, that has no space. So we have to start dealing with that.
What I would keep in mind is just that because you're making a smaller school, when you're talking about relieving pressure from the rural Wyman, you're making the Reeves not an option for that.
An option, right.
So, and again, that's fine. I guess I just want to make sure that everyone knows when you're kind of making, and that, is that I just want to make sure that the outcome that you think is, that could be the outcome, is kind of matching with what, what you think it is. Does that make sense?
We may have to have kids go under the bridge.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, that's, again, I am, I don't have an opinion. I just want to make sure that I understand what, what certain things are.
Okay, so what would, what would be number one in, if we didn't have modulars, if it's not a long-term solution, or if it is, or if anyone has any thoughts? So what should be one?
Yes, Ms. Gasol? Speaking freely, I'm struggling with this. One, only because hearing from admin, to have a long-term solution or to have a redistrict that makes sense educationally for our students, it seems like we need modulars. So without them, to sit and prioritize what makes sense to me is difficult, because I, I don't know what we can do to, to accomplish the goals here listed, um, the goals that we said we'd like to accomplish through our guiding principles. Um, so I'm struggling with how to prioritize it because of that. Okay, that's kind of where my head's at.
So if I got an offer here, I mean, I think if, if we are not going to be able to get modulars and do a redistrict in the, in the way that probably is most flexible towards the needs of the district, right, then I think maybe we need to shift our perspective towards some conception of least disruption while we, while we alleviate the pressures that we have, right? So perhaps something that would move, actually move subseparate, uh, maintain sub-separate programs in their current spaces, move that up, right? If, if, if we are going to have to come, or, or more likely to have to come back to this later, we don't want to move our most vulnerable kids around in order to get there, right? Maybe we think more about, you know, can we, well, this is not something that is exactly on this list, but, um, you know, we are going to have maps that show us what this looks like if we have modulars. Can we create maps without modulars that start to move our students in those directions so that when we eventually get additional ECP space, it is then less disruptive to move towards that model? That's not exactly something on this list, but it's something that would potentially allow us more flexibility down the line. I mean, I, if we're looking at, if, if we don't get additional space for the ECP, right, then I think what we need to shift to is thinking about this not exactly as a phased-in redistrict, but as some kind of student movement that serves as a bridge towards a redistrict that we are able to do when we get that space. We don't know that that's going to be the, the next year, right? But if that's what we're forced into, I want to do it in a way that is going to set us up down the line and not, if we can, move the same student multiple times. We have, if we're moving a student who's just finishing kindergarten now, we don't want to have to come back and move that student at the end of fourth grade, right?
So, so is this guiding principle simply alleviating, alleviating immediate space issue in the Good Year for Wyman and Malcolm White?
I think what I might say here is redistrict in a way that moves toward options that we have with ECP space, while disrupting, I don't, again, I don't like that concept, but while, while maintaining sub-separate space, sub-separate programs where they are. Yes, at the end.
Or is it just pursue class size equity and maintain sub-separate programs and cover buildings? It's just those two?
It's relieve pressure points.
Yeah, relieve the pressure points. Okay, Ms. Wetzel?
On that note, then, if we're relieving pressure points, and I, I agree with what Mr. Lipsit's saying, um, if we're relieving pressure points, would we call that a redistrict at that point, or is that a relieving pressure point situation with a relief of pressure point, assuming that we will have something in the next however many years, whether that be modulars or a new school for the ECP to go in with, like, a long-term plan in our head of that goal? Um, I, I don't know the answer, but-
I think it's redistricting, it's asking for a map, so- I think it's redistricting, it's asking for a map, so, yeah. So we just want to say relieve pressure at those crowded schools? Is that enough for Sanborn to work with?
Is that, is that your number-one bullet point?
I think it was the easiest way to go.
I think that's the original.
The reason why I brought this up is because I agree with Ms. Wetzel. I think this is a very hard thing to prioritize, given what we know about the benefits of securing the ECP space. It's hard to sort of say what our priority, what our guiding principles and priorities would be in this instance, when we know that what we're looking at is a potential patchwork, right? I don't know what that, how we guide our principles towards a bridge, right? So to me, the best option here is, if we're going, if we, if we do have to do something to alleviate that pressure in anticipation in a couple of years or three years of additional ECP space, can we do it in a way that makes that next step easier while we're leaving the pressure points that we have? Is sort of where I'm landing. I don't know how to put that into words, but that's where I'm landing.
So I think, I think maybe what you're asking is that we have the consultant look at the schools that have the most significant issue right now with crowding, and to give you some scenarios that move the fewest number of students. And then, you know, I think you need a crystal ball to sort of know what it's going to look like in a few years so that you're not moving the same students. But I think what you're asking is that you move the fewest number of students to relieve the pressure for September, and that the consultant draw up a couple of scenarios so that you would have some choices on what you would prefer. And you could also think a little bit, just in terms of looking at the choices, I mean, you could take a guess as to what might be a more long-term solution. This is when I wonder if you would need to, if you would need to know what map you were leaning towards on the modular-based one to make that decision. And, because that's where I, where I just get stuck, because I think about, when I think about the buildings that we're talking about with pressure points, in terms of the schools that they are, that, or that they're connected to, like, what you decide to do, what, like, what side that you decide to remove pressure from, you're going to want to know what your plan is going to be down the road, or you could, you very well could move from one side, but actually then the map is going to be moving from the other side. But you could have the scenarios drawn for both, and in the meantime, the committee is exploring. Yes, I guess what I would say is that if we're leaving pressure point one, I think still requires you to be deciding which map you want on the, for the modulars. I still think you're going backwards. I still think if that, if the choice is to do, like, you're just talking about almost extending the phases, right? So we're talking about if you still need to pick the modular-based map, and we could give you, you could have the consultant give you a, like, the pressure point options for one year, or build it out a pressure point phase approach for three years, right? Like, you're just extending the phase, but I still think, I, I struggle with how you, how to do it without understanding where the end map, like, ideal end map is.
So it sounds like what we would do potentially is maybe vote two maps, right? Or get towards that, right?
You're voting an initial map.
Right, we would vote the initial map, which is the map with ECP space, right? And then a fallback plan map. If we don't get ECP space, we would go with this one because it best sets us up to move towards that other map that we voted down the line.
But you could also ask the consultant to take the voted map and give you different options of the pressure points that would be, that are all components that would lead to the end map, so that you have choices of those pressure point maps.
Yeah, my only concern with that is, are we running into time with this?
Right, I think you also would want to think about the timeline, and, because I think that as you're doing some of these other things, you're going to, the community needs the time. They need the ability to participate in the process. And, you know, so you might think about, you know, maybe the, maybe the goal for September is just to look at the areas where there is a, you know, the most significant problem, and...
So could we ask the consultant to provide us with, I don't, if it's three maps to meet ECP space, and then a companion map for each of those, or two companion maps for each of those, that are least disruption, solve the problem, in a way that moves towards, like, we have map A, and then we have backup plans for map A, we have map B and backup plans for map B? Does that make sense? Or is that too complex? I don't know if that's something that...
No, that's fine. I mean, I think that too, that my, my understanding is most likely what we've been talking about with whatever finalized map we choose, is that we're going to have this kind of, these kind of, like, gray line spaces, recognizing if we're trying to, like, build the long-term maps. And so what I would, what I would consider is, like, your kind of, like, stop, the, like, phase redistrict or pressure point is going to be really those, those gray lines is where you would start. And so those are going to be, those are part of what we could ask for, is what is the recommended kind of gray line space that you could, that you could use. Because I think that where my concern still is, is that I think that any option in which we are kind of keeping existing in, is that the variables are so unknown that we could be removing pressure points this year, and then think we're all set for September, and then we could say, no, you know what, actually, if we're still not ready to move to modulars or move out to a new building, we need to actually now do this a little bit more. Like, it's going to be, and I think that, to be, you know, honest with everybody, that is going to feel messier and longer. And it's not necessarily going to, you know, fix it one time. But, and that's fine. I think I just want to be, you know, that's what it will, it will just, that's what it would feel like a little bit more.
By the time we do this, there's going to be 3,000 more apartments in North Lubbock, and we're going to be doing it again anyway, so I wouldn't worry about making it too long-term because it's going to have to be done.
Just to make everybody feel good that we sat here for two and a half hours and...
We still need proposed guiding principles for the event that we don't get modulars, so...
The answer is yes, you can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, it just, it's not, it might look a little bit different than what you're saying right now, but yes, you'll get, you could get something that does those things.
Okay. So in the interest of moving this along a little bit, I'm going to, I'll make that motion, and then we can discuss it and see if that's something the committee wants to do. So I'll, I'll move that we direct the consultant to produce maps for our district if we are able to secure ECP space.
And that's, you'll be at multiple.
Yep. And then we can assess those and move forward with a backup plan if we need to do so. So that we would not necessarily, is, am I misunderstanding where this went?
No, I think you're, you're talking about basically pressure point maps that are based off of the lines drawn in the maps for modulars.
I mean, that's, it's possible that what we should do instead is actually just ask them for the pressure point maps with each modular map. But it sounded like that might be extraneous, given the gray areas.
Yeah, I think it's, yes. That's what, I guess I think that you're still going to, as a committee, need to decide probably, like, which pressure points you want, you would like to move.
Okay. So I guess my motion then would be to table any guiding principles for non-modular or non-ECP space maps, and assess ECP space maps with the understanding that we may need to use those as a basis for a pressure point decision if we do not, if we are unable to secure modulars.
So the clarification, I'm just going to ask, even though you're sick of me asking it, is that therefore the ECPs will remain with the 10 classrooms slated for the Reeves in September, the four classrooms at Shamrock, and a, we will, the continued plan that we have of, have of right now, which is, we will place it where there is space. That is what, that is contingent upon, that would be the ECP plan as is.
That's Andrew's motion.
That's my motion.
Second.
On the motion.
Oh, go ahead, Mike. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, this is all with modules.
No.
No.
This is the N one, in the event of no modules.
Event of no modules, okay. I know, I'll fix that. All right, I just want to make sure that everybody understands with no module. And the other point I want to make too is that we've already paid, we're going to get this direction and some guiding principles to give us how many maps, how many scenarios, what do we, lots and lots of maps, lots and lots of scenarios, for us to whittle it down to the one. All done by, what date did they give us? To finalize it all? Didn't the consultant give us a final date that he could do it by?
So they gave us an initial timeline.
Okay.
And I think that's one of, why I was going like this with your motion.
Yeah.
Because I, I think your motion makes sense, but I think it impacts timeline.
Okay. I just want to make sure that people are aware of that as well. Time's not our best friend right now.
Yeah, because what we're basically saying is modulars or no redistrict, basically, pretty much.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
I mean, we're, we're delaying, sorry, we're delaying the redistricting so we can investigate redistricting with modulars.
You would be redistricting at a smaller scale, at a more potentially shorter scale.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lipsit.
I would say.
Ms. Wetzel? I think on the motion as well, I think it just reinforces the importance of the modulars to this redistrict, and how they're educationally necessary for us to appropriately move students around to ensure academic success, and also meet all of our guiding principles as we're looking at that. And to the point, it does change the timeline as well. It's a bit longer.
Okay.
Someone reiterate the motion for us?
I don't know if I can.
I don't have a lot of those pressure points and, you know...
I think the point is that you're voting for a modular map, and that the timeline of that is going to be contingent upon the modulars, and that we are providing you with maps for, for still, my understanding is, pressure point release that would be instituted for this fall.
Right, right.
So therefore, you're not going to, you're looking at, it is seeming, and I don't want to kind of, scared to say this one, but, is unlikely you're going to do the full thing then for September, that you are going to be doing a soft redistrict based off of that modular map. And is your goal for that to still be September, or is your goal for that to not be? Is that the question?
Yes.
Just trying to answer.
And that's sort of why I come back to my original motion, which is to have with each modular map, a companion pressure point map that we could vote, so that when we vote on a modular map, we have already voted on what we do when we don't get modulars, so that we are not extending the timeline, so that we are able to provide families with clarity as soon as we possibly can, and so that we can move forward for September without having to do what we had to do this, this summer, right?
What I think you're going to do is basically get, you're going to, with each modular map, you're going to get almost like probably a few companion maps, but to your point, you can vote on both at once.
Yes, okay. So that is my motion, that we direct the consultant to create modular maps with ECP space, and to attach to each of those maps companion maps for what we do if, if we don't get modulars, in a way that allows us to bridge towards those maps.
ECP is as-is.
ECP would be then as-is.
Right, which is, which would be moving as few students as possible, just to address some of the hotspots.
Okay, any more discussion on that motion?
I just, I still feel as though we should just make one with no portables, with no modules.
That's what we would be doing. We would be having, in fact, multiple maps with no modules.
Okay. Want to make sure, you know, because I, to Ms. Crowley's point, I, I don't, I don't, I don't see the city spending that kind of money right now, but that's just one man's opinion. And if this next set of maps shows modules didn't come your way for whatever reason, here's a set of apps to adjust accordingly, so.
Yep, that's what we're going to do. All right, all in favor?
With those principles.
Sorry.
No, so this, this would also include not addressing guiding principles for no modulars, because they would be contingent on the plans for modulars. So that we wouldn't necessarily have guiding principles for no modulars. We would have our guiding principles for modular maps, and then backup plans for each of those maps in case we don't have modulars. So guiding principles for those maps sort of fall from the others, if that makes sense.
You need an end point to make the pressure point decision.
Yes.
All right, shall we vote? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes.
And adjourned, yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, on the rest of the night, I can't even speak, can we make a motion to do that next week?
I think we can, I can accept the motion to table the agenda for our next meeting.
Which is the next meeting?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have moved and voted to table the rest of our agenda for the next meeting. So...
Motion adjourned.
We motion adjourn, all in favor. This meeting is adjourned.
What is, the meeting is adjourned.